We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU as well as cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Acason.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Graeb.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel.
Here.
And Councilmember Turner. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We have one proclamation this evening for the 125th anniversary, and we're going to ask those ladies to meet me down here in front. And while they're coming, I have a quick announcement for listeners on WCBU is that WCBU is carrying the President's live remarks at 8:00. So if the council meeting's still going on, they will bridge the signal over to the broadcast of the President's remarks, and then they'll return to regularly scheduled programming afterwards. So if you're listening on CBU and they cut out, then you can make alternative arrangements to hear at the end of the meeting. I think that there's concurrents around the horseshoe that we should be done by then, right? Okay. Whereas, on January 20, 1886, 27 women formed the Peoria Women's Club to learn about and share great music, literature, and art. And whereas in 1891, club members formed a stock company to raise funds to build a clubhouse. On May 22, 1893, the building's cornerstone was placed at the corner of Madison Avenue and Fayette Street. In 2013, it was designated a historical landmark by the Peoria City Council and is still used regularly by members and guests. And whereas the music hall was considered to be acoustically perfect, the Peoria Symphony Orchestra and renowned guests like Victor Hugo, Carl Sandburg, Ethel Barrymore, and Julia Ward Howe all performed in the second-floor theater. And whereas the mission of the club continues to provide opportunities for education, social development, and cultural growth, the Peoria Women's Club continues to raise awareness of civic concerns, public affairs, and historic preservation to its members and to members of the community. It's the oldest standing club in Peoria and the second-oldest women's club in the United States. And whereas this enduring landmark still stands unchanged in downtown Peoria 125 years after its construction, and remains a testament to the passion and persistence of the founding members. Members of the Peoria Women's Club invite the public to honor their history at the Founder's Day celebration on Sunday, January 20, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Now therefore, I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby acknowledge the Peoria Women's Club on their contributions to enrich the community and celebrate the 125th anniversary of their historic building in Peoria, Illinois. We have Margie Schwabel and Mary Ann, or no, Lisa, Lisa Bisby, who are here to give us a little bit more information. Let me just say, it really is an honor for the council and myself to present this proclamation to the club, and we hope for another long 125 more years. Thanks.
Thanks, Margie. You're welcome.
I'd just like to say thank you to Mayor Jim Artis for this wonderful proclamation. We have a rich history here in Peoria, and I don't know how many of you have ever been in the building, but we'd love to have you come to join us as we celebrate our Founder's Day on January 20, coming up real soon, 2:00 to 4:00. And love to have you see our building, that these women, founding members, had such a wonderful inspiration to bring back the interest for women. And this building was built before women had the right to vote. So they were women way ahead of their times, but pushed for education. They saw needs with children. There was a children's home that was started, the mental health facility that was also started by these women. They had all sorts of different interests with the wars. They were wrapping bandages and creating all sorts of support to the war efforts. And we continue. We are on a formal adoption of our Lincoln Elementary, K through 8, and we support this school. We supply books so that they will have a library, musical instruments, so they will have a band. And we purchase even clothing and snacks and so forth, so our teachers are able to hand out those little snacks for children as they come to school with empty tummies. And we have this ongoing support also for the Center for Prevention of Abuse whereby we support those women that are coming to that center with only the clothes on their backs. So we are still working out giving in the community and serving those people in need. So be sure to come to join us, our Founder's Day, January 20, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., at our building, the corner of Fayette and Madison. Thank you very much.
Councilman Graeb.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the joint city council and town board meeting minutes from November 27, 2018, and December 11, 2018, as printed.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Turner. Any adjustments or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have several township items that we need to handle. The first one is 19001 is a request from the township supervisor to approve a resolution concerning the ratification of orders and claims against Peoria Township.
Trustee Graeb.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by trustee Turner. Discussion on this item. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
19-002 is a request from the town officials to approve the December 2018 actual expenditures and to approve the January 2019 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Trustee Graeb.
I move for approval.
Seconded by trustee Turner. Discussion on this item. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at the consent agenda. 19-003 is a request to approve the 2019 annual city and county joint legislative agenda. 19-004 is a request to approve a facade improvement program grant for Epic Peoria LLC at 927 Southwest Washington Street in an amount not to exceed $5,000. 19-005 is a request to commence the process to expand the boundaries of the Peoria Urban Enterprise Zone to include Villa Bardot Apartment Complex, the former IDOT site on Knoxville, and Big Shots on North Orange Prairie Road. 19-006 is a request to approve change order number two for an additional amount of $30,000 for the concrete vertical repairs contract for 2017 project with Illinois Civil Contractors Incorporated for a total amended contract amount of $480,000. 19-007 is a request to approve supplement number two to a preliminary engineering services agreement with Herman &amp; Associates in the amount not to exceed $20,000 for engineering services for the North University project from Pioneer Parkway to Town Line Road. 19-008 is a request to authorize the city manager to extend the collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the city of Peoria and IBEW Local 51, covering the period from December 1, 2018 through November 30, 2021. 19-009 is a request to approve the state MFT resolution in the amount of $118,000 for engineering and construction services for the War Memorial Drive pedestrian enhancements project between Charter Oak Road and Canis Drive. 19-010 is a request to approve the second supplemental state MFT resolution in the amount of $100,000 for construction services for the MacArthur Highway Bridge Reconstruction Project. 19-011 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 31 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to stormwater utility. 19-12 is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the POET's Policy Committee with a request to concur of acting Public Works Director and City Engineer Bill Lewis. 19-13 is a request to receive and file the month-ended November 30, 2018, unaudited financial report. And 19-014 is a report from the city treasurer, Patrick Nikteen, for the month of November 2018 with a request to receive and file, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent this evening? Councilman Euler.
19-008.
008. Councilmember Jensen.
19-003.
003. And Councilmember Montalongo.
Yes, 19-011.
011. Any other items to remove from consent? We have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilman Rigenbach, seconded by Councilmember Acason. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
The first one is 19-003, and it's the 2019 annual city and county joint legislative agenda.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this just to see if there's an item that we can add to it or get your opinion on it from the city manager. I'd like to see us add a request to change some of the things you and I've been talking about that the state implemented with regards to the collection of the home rule sales tax. It's my understanding for the last two or three years, which is part of the reasons why our budget is the way it is, we haven't been receiving the full amount that we have always received. And I think we're also being charged a fee with regards to the collection of the property replacement tax.
So with regards to the home rule sales tax, if in the first joint request item where we have the sales and use tax reform, we could where we have the sales and use tax reform, we could add a statement there of saying to ask the state to rescind the 1.5% holdback that they're holding back on the home rule sales tax. That is a pretty sizable amount of revenue that they're holding back from us. It was 2%. They've lowered that to 1.5%. And if there's no objection from the council, we could certainly add that and build that into the legislative program.
Clarification, and so the audience and the people listening know, how much money is that, isn't it?
Well, it's 1.5% of 22 million, so you'd be looking at, you know, it's a pretty sizable dollar amount.
It's about a 2 million or more?
It's not quite 2 million, but at a 1.5%, it's going to be several hundred thousand dollars a year that we're looking at.
That started being done in about 2016?
2017, I think was the first year that they started that, where we really felt that, and it was at the full 2% level.
Okay, because I'd like to see that included, and I think other local municipalities and cities in the same boat as we are would jump out and support that.
Anyone that has a local option tax, so the county would be in that same boat as well, so I would think that they would be willing to support that because they're seeing that holdback on those local option sales taxes as well.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I move to add that to our legislative agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, seconded by Councilman Ruckregel. Further discussion, Councilman Reganbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out one of the items here, that's a request from the city for direct sponsorship, and that is the public safety pension reform piece. We talked a lot about that last time we were here together in this room, and I see our friends from the chamber, some of the realtors here again, and I don't see any bizpact people right this minute, but people have asked us, what can we do to help? Because we talk about this as being one of the things that affects us more than anything that the state has thrown at us as an unfunded mandate. So on Friday, when we have our legislative works out, we're going to be specifically asking our state legislators to help us address this issue. This will be talking about some of the nuts and bolts of the pension reform that we've been talking about. This isn't taking anybody's pension away from them. We are very respectful of that, but there are some structural changes that need to be made and some common sense reforms that we have been asking for, and we'll enumerate those to our legislators. And I would wholeheartedly ask for those of you that have been addressing us about fees and taxes and whatnot to get on board with us, and let's hit Springfield with this and let them know that this needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments on this item? I will mention that this is one of the top initiatives of the Illinois Municipal League to try to get those monies back to the municipalities where they are supposed to be too, so we'll have strong support from the IML as well. So we have a motion in a second. I'm seeing no more lights. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilman Agasson, or Jensen, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I have one more question on this item with regard to the first item, the joint request on the sales and use tax reform. I'm wondering, I see how we're going to advocate changing it to a point of origin collection instead of point of destination. Is that, if we don't have the formula changed, is that really going to impact the municipalities in the amount that we get back?
Changing that would have a bigger impact for us, and I think that's the reason why we've wanted to look at making that change to the methodology. That will help the city of Peoria. Ultimately, the local use tax reform is going to take a larger legislative effort where you start to look at how they're allocating those dollars across the state because they've built in mass transit funding into that allocation formula.
Right.
So of the 1.5% or 1.25% that is part of that 6.25% local use tax, the first quarter percent goes to Chicago, then they take out, the next portion goes to the RTA and the Metro East Mass Transit District, and then the remaining 86 cents out of that percent goes and is distributed on a per capita basis across the state. So that formula is going to need to be changed at the state level if we're going to see any substantive change with that. In addition, with the changes that happened with the Supreme Court decision, the Wayfair decision, that will open up several hundred million dollars more that should be coming in across the state for additional revenue, and then we should see a trickle down of that because we get a portion of that, but it's not going to be substantive. I mean, we may see at most out of that, you know, several hundred thousand dollars if we're lucky in terms of additional local use tax dollars. As the state has this conversation with other states about how they're going to tax and collect on internet sales, that's where we want to make sure the state's taking into consideration our local option sales taxes. If there's some opportunity for them to take that into consideration, then we would see a significant increase in revenue.
So as a follow-up, is there a reason why we're not including, changing the formula in our request or in our lobbying efforts?
It's just a bigger haul at this point in time, and I don't think, where we're at right now in terms of the discussions with the state legislative entities that are lobbying in this, there's not really a move afoot this year to make that big of a change.
I guess I just want to make sure we keep that out there because I bring it up every time I talk to one of our local legislators, and I'd like to include it. It doesn't mean we'll get it.
No, we had, as we're preparing for the program for Friday, the next slide, as we talk about this, we're going to talk about the formula itself and talk about how unfair it is. So we will keep it on the forefront of our discussions with the legislators. It's going to be there.
Thank you.
Councilman Grab?
I appreciate the comments of my colleagues, and just a reminder that we here at 419 Fulton, the Peoria City Council, we do not have the luxury of having no budget for 265 days, and we do not have the luxury of shutting down a part of the city government. We are required to balance our budget every year, and we have a timeframe within which that must be done. So, you know, I appreciate the fact that we are reminding folks of some of the extrinsic factors that have come down to make it very difficult for us in this city to balance our budget and produce a budget with a human face, and I thank my colleagues for making some very important points.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
19-008 is the request to extend the collective bargaining agreement between the city and IBEW Local 51.
Thank you. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to pull this off the consent agenda to comment as I do every time we talk about collective bargaining agreements and other staff pay increases. I can't support an agenda item that gives pay increases in an economic climate where we haven't resolved our long-term fiscal responsibility issues, and with every one of these, I vote no, so there should be no exception. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a motion to approve, Councilman Reganbach, seconded by Councilman Ruckregel. Further discussion, Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some questions and concerns about this. I don't believe that the council has discussed the negotiations with this collective bargaining unit and been made aware that this was coming forward. We don't even, haven't even been advised what the cost of it will be.
We discussed this in executive session?
I think that was only related to the laborers.
So this is, this affects eight employees. We have eight electricians.
That was one of my questions, how many?
And so, I mean, what we have that will be coming forward is we have trade agreements that are with the electricians, where we have eight, the steam fitters, where we have one employee, the carpenters, where I think we have, is it three, Bill? Three employees. There are separate agreements that'll come forward that are modeled off of the negotiations that we had with the laborers and the teamsters. The only difference here, I think, is that we're seeing that there's a slight wage increase of a quarter percent for the electricians that was built into this agreement. I think it's 1/4 of a percent difference in the first year compared to what we had with the laborers and the teamsters, and that's the only difference.
Okay, and then I guess what's the rationale of having that quarter percent increase?
I think that some of it is just reflective of the market, and as the negotiations went forward with the electricians, that was where I think our negotiating team settled with them and was at that level, and I think that that was part of the discussion that they had.
What's the total cost of it?
Well, the total cost is going to be, and I don't have that number here offhand, but it's going to be for eight employees. I mean, you're probably talking, you know, $6,000 in the first year for this agreement, and then it's going to go up from there. I mean, you're not talking a lot of money for the number of employees that we have and the dollar amounts that we're talking about.
And then, and it does say, this has already been part of the budget that we approved.
Correct. We folded, we made some budgetary assumptions and built that into the spending plan for the year.
Okay, thank you. I just, in the future, would, and I understand that the trades are maybe treated differently since there's these trade unions that just have a few employees, but I would appreciate us having the information ahead of time in a discussion before it comes to the council floor. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes with ten ayes, one nay. Councilmember Euler, Madam Clerk?
19-011 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 31 pertaining to stormwater utility.
Councilmember Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just got a couple of questions or requests for some information back to city manager on this item of stormwater utility fee. So last year was the first year we collected money for the stormwater utility fee. It was a new fee that just came into existence. What I'm looking for is, I know this passed with the thought of there being 400-plus projects that were in the hopper to be done. So what I'm looking for is the dollars that were actually collected for 2018, the amount of dollars spent on these projects, and if we could also get a list of the 400-plus projects that we have so we can kind of see from year to year how we're completing these projects as well. I also noticed there's been a lot of new information on our website. That was a nice job, Mr. City Manager, getting that information out there to the public. I also noticed that there are a couple public meetings with the public to discuss stormwater utility fees, and Mr. City Manager, if you want to make a couple of comments on that, that would be good. As far as this item goes, I will be voting no, just to be consistent with my vote on this in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to put a motion out there? Councilman Reganbach, motion to approve, seconded, Councilman Turner. Question? Mr. Manager?
So maybe I'll ask interim Public Works Director Lewis to just comment about the public meetings that we have coming forward and what we'll be discussing at those.
Yes, thank you. We have two public meetings scheduled right now, one for this Thursday at 6:00, and then for the following Thursday at 6:00. I believe this Thursday meeting is at the Peoria Charter, at the Carver Center, and then the following week will be at the Peoria Charter Coach. So we have those two meetings set up. They're both at 6:00. I'm in the PM, and we'll have staff on site to go over stormwater utility questions and touch on CSO issues as they come up.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're talking about the topic, I just have a follow-up question to an issue that I brought up maybe two months ago with regards to some of the complaints I was receiving about the call center, and I know Director Reese was looking into it. I just don't, I haven't heard anything, I know with his transition, if there's an update, or if not, if you can provide one to us. Sorry.
Yeah, that's, I know that there were some discussions going on, and former Director Reese had some previous conversations. I'd have to look into that situation to find out exactly where we were with that. I wasn't involved in those communications, but I'll find out for you, and I'll get in touch with you.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes with ten ayes, one no, voting no, Councilmember Montalongo, Madam Clerk?
19-015 is a presentation by Dr. Joe Corey regarding the Don't Start Program.
Well, thank you for having us. My name is Joe Corey. This is my partner, Wirth Mohammed, in this project, and this project is called Don't Start, and this project originated with Carl Cannon, and the whole concept here is to try and convince our youth to not start going down the wrong path, wrong path of gangs, abusing drugs, and other bad behaviors. So we are both local musicians, and we decided to write a song and make a video for this cause, and we've been working together on this for two years, and we're kind of joined at the hip, and some people think we're twin sons of different mothers, so. But, so Maria Chris helped us, and Romell Lanier did the music for us. And I'm just going to very quickly mention a few things here. A lot of us in the room are familiar with these stats, but the overdoses in the city of Peoria peaked last year. They're down some this year. Deaths peaked last year, down some this year. Peoria County, you can see, again, the same pattern in the deaths. Unfortunately, Jamie Harwood doesn't have any direct information on overdoses. There's different platforms in, you know, the Peoria Police, the Coroner's Office, and AMT, so there's a bit of a challenge for them to kind of communicate with each other. Now, AMT gave us these stats. Narcan is a medicine that can be given to somebody who is overdosed, and it blocks the effect of the opioid, of the narcotic medicine, on the receptor in the brain, which causes the depressive effect on the brain function, and it can reverse an overdose. So as we see here, AMT gave 773 doses 2017 and 18 less. This does not count what was given in emergency rooms and by the Jolt Foundation, their foundation in town, and other people who may have access to the Narcan. The murder rate unfortunately is doubled in, when you look at the five-year average, 2013, 2017, that rate averages 10. This year, it's, it's actually, I think the number's closer to 22 for this year. It's up 100%. So with that being said, we are attempting to convince our youth to don't even start going down the path that would lead them ultimately to these types of behaviors and outcomes and consequences. So here is our, here's our video. This is, this is the, about half of the video that we're going to show, a little less than half, and this is the, kind of the intro to it.
Yes, it's an emergency. I just had an intruder come into my home, and I hit him with a frying pan. He's laying on my floor.
So, the video continues for about another three minutes, and we have a lot of shots of programs going on in town. It's Outside Mission, Dream Center, Urban League, Boys and Girls Club, just all these positive activities that are available to our youth. So, we have this contrast going on, showing bad behavior, good behavior. And the other part of our message, we haven't heard, I come in singing, and Warth raps, and then we have, Maria Chris does some singing, too. But the other part of our message is stay in school and be a leader. So, those are, those are our, those are our main messages.
Thank you for having us. This is real important for us, you know, music and the psychology of the human beings. We all resort to music in some type of form and fashion to deal with our emotions when we're going through things, or even when we're happy. Me and Joe, we knew that in order to solve this problem, we got to use music. So, I want to start off saying, if it plays in Peoria, it plays everywhere. Some people know about this saying. This was more than a slogan. This was standard for industry. Peoria has always been an epic center for what will be considered standard for the country and arguably the world. Let's ask ourselves what's playing around the nation right now. Music controls the world, and right now, hip-hop controls music. If popular music is promoting Molly Percocet to our youth for it to look cool, to abuse drugs, and use them for recreation, it's undeniably a major factor in the opioid epidemic we're seeing around this country. Most people wouldn't know their ABCs if it wasn't for the song. What me and Joe, what me and Joe is targeting, some of the biggest problems plaguing our youth today, and that's the drug addiction, gang violence, suicide, bullying, and poverty. All these things are mentioned in the Don't Start song and depicted in the video. Also showcasing that we can all pull together through support of these many positive organizations in our city like Boys and Girls Club, South Side Mission, the Curly Boo Basketball Camp, I mean, Carver Center, so many organizations pulled together, the Women's Nutritional Program, David Booth, so many people pulled together to be a part of this message that we promoting to our kids that it's cool to be positive. With the support of the City Council, we can make Peoria a standard again, and if not for anything, in its support for positive music and uplifting messages. Leaders of Peoria, let's take center stage and be leaders of this movement of prevention. This is what Don't Start stands for. Intervention is hard. This is what Don't Shoot stood for. It's possible, but it's hard. So, we ask for full support of the city leaders so we can stop the problem before it starts. Music has been a tool used to create this problem. Only through music, we believe, we can solve this problem. This positive music can revitalize our, revitalize our city in every way. It can bring jobs and tourism like never seen before. And instead of following trends, we will become the trend and become leaders of the free world, leading the nation in the direction of love and peace. Thank you.
We received a word from the State Dare Board that they have authorized our video's use by their officers in the schools. And we received email, emails for every county regional superintendent from the state superintendent of schools office to distribute this around the state. So, again, we appreciate, appreciate all the help we can get. One of the things that would be, would be good for us if we could be able to talk to city grant writers to help, you know, get, get our message out, and, and any other ideas they might have for us.
And last but not least, we want everyone to get a real, clear understanding of what Don't Start stands for. Don't Start is prevention. We believe that once you start something, it's hard to stop it. If you catch them before they start it, you have a better chance of keeping them from joining violent gangs or abusing drugs. It's hard to tell an addict to stop something once they start it, and it's even harder to get kids out of gangs once they join. So, Don't Start is all about prevention. And we believe that if we catch the youth at a younger age, then we can stop this problem before it gets out of hand.
Thank you. And you can go to YouTube and just Google Don't Start, and you can put in either our names, Corey, C-O-U-R-I, or War, it comes up under War. We've had over 25,000 hits on YouTube, so. Thank you.
Mr. Mohammed and Dr. Corey, if you have not already, if you'd talk with our Communications Director, Stacy Peterson, right back here, we'd like to also link that into our website so we can make sure that people can, can go there and see the full video. And I know I speak on behalf of the entire council on this one, is that we appreciate your efforts in this regard. I think it fits in well to what the community wants, is a safer community. P-CAV, Peoria Community Against Violence, is certainly going and talking a lot in this same regard, too. So, anything we can do to help you with that, please let us know. Thank you very much. Could we get a motion to receive and file? Councilmember Jensen, seconded. Councilmember Euler, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
19-016 is a request to receive and file a presentation regarding GPEDC city commitment and 2019 outlook.
We have a familiar face with us from a little over a year ago, our current Executive Director for the Greater Peoria EDC, Mr. Seti. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's an honor to be back on the floor and in the horseshoe. I never do know how best to address everyone, so I grab the handheld mic so I can keep turning around. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you. I actually did speak a couple of weeks ago briefly about the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council, and so I was invited back to give a fuller presentation, working with Assistant City Manager Rattler, on all of the partnership agreements that she's been working out over the next couple of council meetings. I think you'll be hearing a number of different presentations from some of the folks that I think consider ourselves an extension of the work that the city does, and very much so, I consider the work that the Economic Development Council does as an extension of your own economic development department. This is our mission statement, and I want to point out that when we say that the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council, in collaboration with local partners, we don't do this work on our, on our own. We do it in collaboration with our local partners, which is, is your city staff, and you as individual council members even, and the mayor, drive economic growth in Greater Peoria through targeted business and talent development and attraction. We cover a large territory. We cover five counties, Peoria, Woodford, Ma, Peoria, Woodford, Tazewell Counties, which are the ones that everybody can kind of easily remember, but then also Mason and Logan Counties, so all the way to Havana and to Lincoln and those areas. We are what's called an Economic Development District, which is a designation of the Economic Development Administration of the Department of Commerce, which means that we help manage a strategic plan for this region, which I'll, I'll get to in a moment. I thought, even though I want to talk about what, what the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council does, I thought I would take this opportunity to give you a little snapshot into how your local economy is, is, is performing. And so, this is a chart of the two figures that I pay the closest attention to when it comes to the economy, which is labor force and the total number of people employed. I don't look at the unemployment rate, because the unemployment rate is a bit of a false, it can be kind of a false narrative. The unemployment rate is the total number of unemployed people divided into the total number of people that are in your workforce. But you can get to a pretty low unemployment rate by having everybody leave. And so, it's not a very good, you can, that's the way, one of the ways you can see a reduction in your unemployment rate. A better measure is to see how your labor force is doing, and is it increasing or is it decreasing? And this graph shows from January 2017 to November of 2018 what's been happening. And the latest numbers available are the November numbers at a county and a city level. The December numbers will come out, they come out about three weeks later. So, the December numbers will come out in late January, and then we continually update this. This is just for the city of Peoria. This isn't for the entire region. And so, your labor force has grown by 921 people. Labor force is kind of an interesting, it's not everybody that could work, but it's everybody who's looking to work. And so, you're in the labor force if you're engaged in the workforce. That is the, whether you are working or looking for work. So, it does not include everybody who could or should be working. We don't have county level, or we haven't been able to find a good source for county level, what we would call the labor participation rate, which is the total, which is the percentage of people that could possibly be working or should be working. But still, the fact that you have a growth in your labor force is usually a sign of some optimism in your local economy, because people may be coming off the bench and back into the workforce. More important is the bottom line, the green line, which shows that over that same time period, you have 2,100 more, and I made sure that the math, because I always hate when a number comes out to be so even like that, because it looks like you're estimating. And it actually, I did go back and actually subtract the numbers from IDES to make sure I did that right. It is 2,100 more employed Peorians. I do want to note, that doesn't necessarily mean they're working in Peoria. It means that they live in Peoria, and they are considered employed. So, this is, this could very well be a regional statistic. The, the progress that's being made in the city of Peoria is reflective of the general trends we've seen in the region over the last, over the last 23 months. So, this is really what we're aiming at, at the Economic Development Council, is to get these numbers to keep going up. So, we, how do we do this? Well, we do three things, in three buckets. One, we try to strengthen communities, and we do this through this comprehensive economic development strategy, which I'll talk about briefly. We also do rural economic development, which is not something that impacts the city of Peoria and the council directly, but it is important for the overall region, because our rural economy is an important feeder even into your own local economy. So, we do provide some services out to the communities that don't have professional staff in the economic development area. But then, we also grow a business, grow businesses through assistance, attraction, and our work with startups. And then, we try to grow talent, both develop the talent that we have here, but then also try to attract talent from outside of the region. I mentioned the SEDs, and if some of you remember, if you remember back to 2012 and the focused forward Central Illinois efforts that went on, the dozens and dozens of meetings that had over, well over 1,000 people participate in those, in those meetings and give input. That all ended up in a plan called a comprehensive economic development strategy, which actually was submitted to the EDA and spans from 2015 to 2019. So, guess what that means? In, at the end of this year, we'll, we'll be rewriting it again. We don't have to go through the same format every time, but we do have to have a collective strategy of how we're going to move this region forward. Because it's not the city of Peoria on an island. It's the city of Peoria within a larger region, where we have people who live in Peoria that work in East Peoria and Morton, people in Washington and Germantown Hills and Pekin that work in Peoria. So, this all has to work together. So, we have to think of ourselves as a region. So, the very first objective within, within the SEDs document is to act regional, to understand that we're all in this together. The second is expanding economic performance, improving human capital, that is the workforce side of things, and then value and enhance our quality of life. The, what's important about the comprehensive economic development strategy is that it's not merely the work plan of GPEDC. Rather, it's the work plan for the region. So, there are other organizations that are tasked with some of the work that's done here. So, enhancing our quality of life, very much, there's a portion in there for the Health Department. There's a portion in there for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So, it is not just the plan of my organization. We have a lot to do with the things that are in there. But it's actually the plan of the community to move forward. So, I wanted to briefly go over some of the, of the areas that we work in, and some of our 2018 highlights of what we did and what we plan on doing in 2019. So, business attraction is the, kind of what we would call the blocking and tackling of economic development. Eighty to 90% of your jobs in your community are going to come from the companies that are already here. And we need to work to support those companies and see how we can help them grow, help them overcome obstacles. And so, we attempt to meet with, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead. You know what? I'm going to just, I'm going to skip ahead, and I'll come back since I've already halfway into this. One of the ways we do that is going out and meeting with those businesses. And we, I try to meet with 100 businesses a year in the region. So, this past year, we met at least 28. I actually think that, that may be a little bit of an old slide, where we reach out to these, these organizations and these companies to try to understand what they're going through, and then see if there are ways that we can help them, connect them with resources, put them in touch with the, with the training opportunities and other resources that are in the community. We also manage the enterprise zone for Peoria County, which has a, I believe you actually, tonight, on one of your items on the consent agenda was to alter the boundaries of the enterprise zone. So, that now falls on my organization to do all of the work, to put that boundary amendment together and submit it to the, to the state. In 2019, we'll be processing another, at least one more enterprise zone change. We manage a foreign trade zone, which is a federal designation that allows for some relief from tariffs. And then, also, we're really going to be starting to focus on the defense industry. We were the recipient of a Department of Defense grant that will allow us to work with our companies in the region, in the city and in the region, to understand how they might be able to get more contracts with defense industry partners, so that we can help diversify our economy here. Now, I'm going to move back to business attraction, and my apologies for, for that. Business attraction is probably the thing that, that people are, would most associate with what we try to do, and it's the thing that's really the hardest to do. And it's, because it really does, this is where the regionalism really comes in, in trying to market this entire region to the outside world. We do this in a number of ways. Site-selected requests, we get a number of them each year, where we're putting in opportunities for the, for property within the city, for corporations, usually manufacturers, but other types of corporations. other types of corporations, that are seeking an opportunity to grow or relocate. So, that's a list of a few of the, of the projects. We coordinate with your staff here, working closely with them on identifying what those properties might be, what incentives might be available, and putting those applications together. But we, we do all of the legwork of putting those applications and chasing them down. We also attend trade shows. We went to four trade shows this year. But also, in addition to those trade shows, work to build relationships with site selectors or consultants, who are doing, they're commercial real estate agents that are in this business of working with companies. And then, also with foreign consulates. So, Mayor Artis, for example, has a really good relationship with General Counsel Ito of the Nation of Japan. And so, those are the types of, those consulates are a great entry point into understanding where those businesses are. So, we've made a relationship with the Japanese External Trade Organization, the U.S.-Vietnam Foundation, the Italian Trade Agency, company, organizations like that, that are representing foreign firms that are interested in American presence. In 2019, we're going to have an entirely new state organization or leadership at the State Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. So, one of the things that we will do is try to understand who those people are, what their relationship, what their interests are, so that, so that our region is well represented in Springfield. We're also going to be doing some targeted work in St. Louis and Dallas with their site selectors. We've done a lot of work trying to work with site selectors in Chicago. Quite frankly, the Chicago site selectors are so busy with stuff going on in Chicago that they often don't have time to think about anywhere outside of Chicago, even outside of the city of Chicago itself. So, we're branching out a little bit. This past year, we did some outreach to folks in Charlotte, places where we have a direct flight, so Dallas, Atlanta, but then also St. Louis because of its proximity. And then, I will, I'm going to talk about innovation in a second, but I, but I want to think a little bit, or explain to you a little bit about innovation as attraction, that we have some really amazing innovative assets in this community. We're going to be building a new one that I'll talk about here in a moment. But we want to use that to set the stage for trying to attract companies here, because they are interested in innovation, because I think that's something that we have a real strength in. Innovation and entrepreneurship, a couple of the things that we do in that space, we manage a co-working space, that I'm not sure how many people in the, on the council know about it, but it's in the warehouse district. This is a small co-working space. We actually are just growing physically a little bit. We have 16 different individuals that have signed up. So, these are 16 businesses that are running out of the warehouse district, you know, in the space that's kind of right next to Sugar. We sponsored a visit by a group called the Results Junkies, which was a group of entrepreneurs that came, that traveled across the United States and, and visit with entrepreneurial communities. That actually resulted in one of the entrepreneurs in that group making a significant investment in one of the local startups here in Peoria. In 2019, of all of the things that are up here on this list, the one I want to talk about is the Peoria Innovation Hub, which some of you might have heard about. Back in, in late December, we announced this. This is a partnership between the Greater Peoria Economic Development Council, OSF Healthcare, and Illinois Central College to attract, to, we've been able to identify a funding source from the University of Illinois that will allow us to transform ICC's Thomas Building into an innovation hub that will have all of the things that you would need to equip, inspire, and support entrepreneurs. So, much, I could go on and on about that. It's a very exciting thing. It'll be very unique to Peoria, and hopefully allow us to not only develop our own entrepreneurs with providing solutions to business problems, but also be that attraction element of getting entrepreneurs from other communities to come here and think about how, how they can make their business work here. And then, finally, workforce development, which is the new currency of economic development. Years and years ago, it was all about incentives. How much could you give more than the next community could give? I'm not going to lie to you and say that incentives aren't still important, but companies are sophisticated enough to understand that they need to make their company work in your community. And the thing that they need more than anything else is a qualified workforce. And so, GPEDC recognizing that, just tried to work on that. On your desks I placed earlier, or Stacy placed earlier, our Career Spark brochure from this year, Career Spark is an opportunity for 4,200 young people this year, over 1,000 of them from city of Peoria schools, that attended a career exploration fair at the Civic Center. Very important, because the earlier you start young people understanding what their careers are, what their career opportunities are going to be, the greater the chance that they start understanding that at the high school level and start taking classes. So, what we do on workforce development is super important, both training the young, the people that we have here for the jobs that are here, but are also attracting people from outside. That's why we do things like intern mixers and newcomer mixers. In 2019, we are going to do another Career Spark. This time, we went, we did 3,400 students the first year. We did 4,200 students the second year. We're hoping for 5,000 students this year. Some targeted talent attraction around the areas that we know we have the greatest need in healthcare and manufacturing. And then, we have this Live GP booklet, which is really a tool that we give to HR recruiters and realtors and, and other folks like that, to help them attract people to their community. So, we do a lot of work with the, with the human resources groups to help attract people to their community. And then, finally, just back to the idea of regional collaboration equals success. We do work in regional economic development, because collectively, it's easier to do things than it is individually. And there are things that are beyond just the importance, or that are, are greater than just what the city of Peoria needs, that collectively, we can do a lot easier. So, Opportunity Zones is an, is an amazing new tool that was created by the federal government. There are Opportunity Zones in Peoria, Pekin, Lincoln, and Havana. So, how do we have a collective strategy to drive innovation or investment to those? The Shop Local 365 was a collaborative effort between a variety of chambers of commerce, including the Peoria Area Chamber of Commerce, and the city of Peoria and Peoria County and others, to really try to drive that message home. And you've seen those on billboards, you've seen it on social media. I previously referenced the SEDs that will need to be redesigned this year and rewritten, and we'll need everybody's participation in that. And then, finally, a data, I would encourage you to, if you want to go to our Data Hub website, a lot of the data about the good and the bad about our region is there for, for people to help make decisions. So, I will leave it at that, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy. Thank you very much for the opportunity to make a presentation to you. We very much appreciate the investment that the city of Peoria makes in our organization. Mayor Artis sits on our board, and I certainly appreciate his leadership in our organization as well. So, if there's, I'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Councilmember Grayb.
Welcome back, Chris. It doesn't quite seem like you've been gone, because you're still working for the city of Peoria. But one of the important aspects that I see here for our region and our ability to grow and really prosper is concentrating more on the development of our transportation links. We can go back and talk about the Kerner Curve and regurgitate the ancient history, but for a number of years, there was a drive on the part of some of our federal lawmakers to have a direct four-lane highway out of Peoria to Chicago. Looks like there is a lot of resistance as it relates to that particular proposal, the desire to have that direct link. And we heard that, oh, it's only 15 or 20 minutes difference if we had that versus just going down to Bloomington, for example, and then making our way up northeast. However, right along that corridor, there are a lot of things that can happen if we would actually have a direct route to Chicago. There's a lot of economic development that would happen. Also, a huge problem, I think, for us, as I remember as a young kid, we used to be able to get the train not too far from where we are right now, and then later on, it was Chillicothe. Now, we got to go all the way to Bloomington. This is, this is a problem. I mean, our transportation links, I believe, are critical for the success of our city and indeed, our region. Do you have any update you can give us? And I think we're talking basically here, probably our federal lawmakers.
So, thanks for the question. I would agree that infrastructure is the next to workforce, or maybe equally as important as workforce, is having that proper infrastructure. Mayor Artis and I did meet with the Executive Director of the High-Speed Rail Coalition, that was a few months ago, to try to, as you understand, might understand, passenger rail connections are very expensive and difficult. I know the mayor has been an advocate of it in the past, as has this council, and we would continue to join in those efforts. I will be honest, that we haven't done a lot of work with, with the highway to Chicago issue, just not come up on our, my radar screen in the last 12 months. But, but the more connections we have to, to the rest of the state and the rest of the Midwest, the better. I will say that Peoria and this region is really blessed with, although you did, were right to point out a couple of the places where things could improve. We're one of the only places in the country that has the really unique combination of rail, river, road, and air. And we have all of those things. And that, that is very helpful, and when we're trying to make our case for why come to Peoria, you know, access to markets is a cost that manufacturers and other companies incur. So, if we can provide the options of a really great, we have five Class 1 railroads that run through this, through this region, and the Illinois River, which, you know, everybody has a railroad. Most counties or most cities will have a railroad and, and access to interstates. The quality of our airport is unparalleled for a city our size and the asset of the Illinois River. So, we just need to continue to accentuate those, but then work with state and federal legislators on, on those issues that you mentioned.
Yeah, and I hope we will continue to work on that, and I appreciate your, we don't want to just talk about the glass being half-empty, but our Greater Peoria, General Wayne A. Downing International Airport is wonderful, absolutely fantastic. And I'm hearing that there are some folks up north who miss our Greater Peoria Wayne A. Downing International Airport and the ease of moving around. And so, that, that is a huge plus. But those transportation links are going to be so critical, and I think that we should continue to work hard on that. Direct four-lane highway to Chicago, I continue to feel that way. Came up my first year on the council under Mayor Malouf, continued, I know Ray LaHood worked very hard on that. And I think the transportation, the rail link is extremely important. We shouldn't have to go to Bloomington to hop on a train to go somewhere. It just shouldn't be that way if we're going to really hit our stride here in Peoria. Thanks again for all the work you do. In a way, I'm kind of envious that you're not with us anymore, because he's one of the few people I'd be sending an email to at 1:00 in the morning, and gosh, I'd get an answer within about 10 seconds. And I have finally suggested to Patrick Urie that maybe he would say that you go to bed a little bit earlier. But anyway, we miss your zealous work, tremendous amount of work ethic that you had, and I know you're going to serve us very well in the capacity you're in.
Thank you, sir.
I had Councilmember Akison next.
Thank you, Chris. Great presentation, and you're always so positive. You really amplify the glasses full rather than empty, and I appreciate that. The slide that you have for business assistants, you have, you said you thought perhaps it was an old list, or maybe there's an updated list. I noticed that there's no medical businesses listed, and I was wondering if that would be a focus for 2019. And then, in addition, you said that when you do the business visits, you ask, what more can we do and what are you looking for? And I, I'm interested in the feedback. What kind of feedback do you get? Are there any common threads of suggestions or requests that you could share with the council?
Sure. So, I said it was old only because I thought I saw another list that Caesar had asked our business development, our business attraction assistance person Sally for, and I thought I saw 32, but I'd already submitted this, you know. Yeah. So, Unity and OSF, UE comps up there. I will say, so, the quality of, just to answer your first question, our goal is to meet with 100, what we would call intra-regional or interstate businesses a year. We're really tasked with head of household jobs and those, that, what we call the primary economy. Healthcare kind of sits on the border, and when I say the primary economy, it's, it's classically defined as the companies and the businesses in your community where the majority of the goods and services they provide are sold outside of the community. So, the Kamatsus, the Caterpillars, the Keystone's. Whereas, the secondary economy is, are those businesses where the majority is, is provided to the people within the region. And healthcare has generally been that, right? Because as the, as the, as the primary economy takes off, the retail sector, the healthcare sector, the education sector, all kind of, you know, fill in. Healthcare has kind of become a different beast here in, in Central Illinois and in, and in Peoria in particular, because of the strength of, of the medical sector. So, we've moved beyond just kind of the retail provision of healthcare services to having innovative services and specialty care. So, it isn't our plan necessarily to meet with more medical companies, like individual doctor's offices. We would leave, you know, practices like that, you know, to, to the local staff, but maybe, maybe organizations like Illinois Cancer Care and, and some of those larger organizations that have a footprint that, that might be located here but have a footprint outside. Regarding your second question, the number one issue that comes up when we talk to companies is workforce, is the ability to attract people to come to their, you know, to their companies. By far, if I were to look at the reports that Sally does on, and Deborah has, Assistant City Manager Rattler has been on a few of them, and would likely echo that response, that it's, it's having that quality workforce, that dependable workforce is the number one issue, you know, that people bring up. Now, occasionally, if, you know, so, I'll give you a great example of a solution. When we met with ATS years ago, one of the things they said was how terrible North University Street was from Pioneer Parkway to Town Line Road. That, that whole project that we were able to, that the EDC and the, and the city of Peoria were able to work on to get a $2 million EDA grant and $2 million IDOT grant to improve that road, was emanated from a set of business visits in Pioneer Park. So, sometimes you do get some localized issues about, you know, transportation or infrastructure. But workforce is, is, at least over the last few years, has been the number one issue.
Thank you. And one more follow-up. So, is there some sort of written document that lists out the workforce, the gap between the jobs that are, and you and I've talked about this, the gaps between what businesses are looking for and what we have to offer, so that there could be more emphasis on strategizing how you're going to fill that gap?
Sure. We, this would have been two years ago, the GPEDC put together what was called the Talent Forecast, which looked at what jobs are going to be in demand in the, in the very near future, both from growth of jobs, but really from the replacement of jobs. You know, as the workforce gets older, in certain, in certain industries in particular, like nursing, I read a statistic once that by 2020, a million nurses are going to retire in this, in this country. And that, you know, what is the impact on healthcare when that happens? So, the Talent Forecast looked at that. I can certainly get you a copy of that. We've been looking to update that with some additional information based on an organization called MZ that puts this information together. And it's actually available on the, on the, on the website, on the, on our Data Hub. I can send you a link to that. But I think that there's really two answers to the question. There's both the critical skill gap between what companies need in terms of those, you know, you have to be a welder, you have to be a nurse, and those are the things that we're working with ICC and the school districts to try to create those career pathways. But then, the other half of that is the, is what I would, would be generally called the soft skills of maintaining a job, being able to show up to, to work on time, being able to pass a drug test, have a driver's license, those things that aren't critical skill requirements, but they are skill requirements. Some of that I would consider even resiliency issues, the ability for some folks to have backup plans or have a means of transportation to their job, and then a reliable means of transportation so that, because a lot of these jobs are hourly jobs, and if you don't show up, you don't get paid, and very well, you could get fired. So, I think there's a, there's, there's kind of two issues at play that we're working with. We are not a social service provider. We try to work with those social, social service providers and other institutions to help address those gaps.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Chris. Good to see you again, and I really appreciate, as my colleague said, you being always so positive. I have about 50 questions for you, but I don't want to be here until midnight. None of us want to be here until midnight tonight. So, I'm, I'm going to ask you one question, kind of on the negative side, but I have to ask. State Illinois leads this country five years in a row with mass exit people, five years in a row. I'd like to know what you think is going to be your biggest obstacle in 2019? obstacle in 2019?
Well, you know, I think, you know, and I will remain positive that every, you know, I've lived in California, I've lived in Indiana, I've lived in Colorado, and I've lived in Illinois. Every place has things that people wish were different. But every place also has things that people are, should be excited about and proud of. I've lived now in Peoria for 15 years, and I'm proud to live here, and I'm not ashamed to say that to people who I meet, who say, you moved here from, because I moved here from Denver, and I'm actually from Los Angeles. And people will look at me as, as if I was crazy to move here. And, and what I tell them is, this is a great place to live. My friend Jeff Griffin out there will say he's tired of people who live here telling him it was crazy for him to move here. So I think what we have to do when it comes to that is understand that we live in a great place, and we need to be able to, you know, to express that to other people, that this place is, is worth valuing and worth being a part of. The state of Illinois has its struggles, and there's no doubt that at the state level, we have seen decisions that have been made or not made, in the case of some budget impasses, that have had a negative impact on our image as a state. I think that can be rebuilt. When we're out talking to people, whether it's a company or individuals, we do accentuate the positive, because that is, that is my job. I am, I am the region's salesperson, right? So I, my job is to, is to accentuate those positives and let people know that, that despite some of the issues that our state has, there are, and our region has, there are also great things about it. And I can point to any number of other states in the, in the country that have, they may be a different set of problems, but, but there are people there that are also unhappy. So I think, I think always one of the biggest challenges in going into 2019 is battling image, not so much battling the reality, you know, because if, if high taxation is a problem for a company, you know, I always say, every dollar for a company is a dollar. Whether it's a dollar they spend on, you know, on taxation or a dollar they spend on electricity, we have some of the lowest electricity costs in the nation in southern Illinois, in the Amerin, in the Amerin Territory. So we just need to be able to overcome those, what is often perceived as a problem with real facts, and that's really what we're trying to do.
Chris, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Setti, thank you for being here. I don't miss you because I talk to you all the time. So on your slide that shows we do three things, grow business and grow talent, my question, and this is a question that really is a holdover from your predecessor, this question, and then the one I'll ask after this, is in those particular areas, grow business and grow talent, what are we doing, what is GP EDC doing to focus on the minority communities, specifically African-American community? And I'm particularly interested in the business assistance and business attraction areas.
So for minority communities, and I would just say for, not necessarily the minority community, but the impoverished community in, in Peoria and in the region, you know, I think the strongest work we do is, is around workforce development. We have a very strong relationship with Peoria Public Schools in trying to develop, helping them develop their curriculum and develop opportunities for their students to access the jobs that are available. So working on our internship program, where we helped Peoria Public Schools and others to develop internship opportunities for high school youth so that they can be, so that they can understand, get that early job opportunities and those early job experiences. So things like the, like Career Spark, if I were to show you a Career Spark video, which you could find on our website, you would see a variety of kids who are taking part in that. And so I think that's, on that workforce side, is the most crucial. On the business assistance side, we're willing to help any organization. Our job, again, is to help those land those head of household jobs. So we tend to work with the larger companies in our community. We don't, we don't tend to work on, on retail operations. That's what the City of Peoria Economic Development Staff is, is for smaller, you know, entrepreneurial opportunities. But, but we would be more than happy to work with, with companies. I think we would love to have maybe an attraction strategy around bringing minority-owned businesses to this community. I mean, obviously, work, and I know some of the work that you do when you're not here, is in developing communities here, but maybe there's a strategy out there of minority-owned businesses that are looking to expand coming to this region. So I do think it's worthy of a, of a conversation.
And that's what I like to see with the support that the City of Peoria provides to GP EDC and with closing in on 30% of the City of Peoria being minority and at least 20% of that African-American. I think there needs to be some type of strategy developed from the GP EDC to, to attract and assist minority businesses to come here.
I'd also say that the Opportunity Zone strategy that we're putting together as a collective strategy amongst the, is really, I think, going to benefit most, some of the more impoverished parts of our community. That's the definition of behind the Opportunity Zone. So when I called you the other day, said I wanted to meet with you, one of the things I wanted to talk about is how do we work in some of the, in some of the more difficult census tracts that were identified as opportunity zones, how do we develop opportunities for investment there? And I think that's one of the, one of the areas that our organization can work with.
But just remember, we've got a lot of African-American businesses that are not impoverished. They are architects, they are engineers, and IT. And so I appreciate the emphasis on impoverished communities, but we've got a lot of businesses out there on the other end of the spectrum. And lastly, and this is something that you may not be able to address right now, this is also a holdover from your predecessor. I'd like to find out if the GP EDC board has gotten any better with attracting any African-Americans to their board, and you may need to look into that a little more.
I'm sure we've made a lot of progress there. I will tell you that we've had this conversation at our board meeting. Here, here's the, the base problem. It's, it's not an excuse, but it's, it's one of the reasons is that we are a 501(c)(6), so we are a membership organization. So you have to be an investor, you know, you have to, and, and so the, the companies that have been investors, they get to pick who their board members are. And so, so that is one of the, one of the issues. What we have tried to do, and so, but we have discussed what, what efforts we could do to diversify our own board, both in terms of minorities and female representation and others. We do have what we call the SEDS Strategy Committee, and we have, and the SEDS Strategy Committee is kind of the, is the organization or is the, is the group that oversees that, the implementation of the SEDS work that's being done. That's an area where we have some discretion, and that's an area where I would love, because that's really the work of the organization, right, is, is to see that, that the elements within the SEDS document are being addressed. And so that's an area where we have tried to diversify, not just with, with, you know, on, on racial lines, but also geographically. So having to pull in some folks from Mason and Logan County where we didn't have a lot of representation. So what I can say to you is that it's our, it's our goal to get better. We have some structural issues that make that more difficult, but there's nothing that we, that we can't keep working towards.
I appreciate that, because when contractors come before us and public work sits there, my question is always, what is the minority participation in those projects? Because we're giving them money and recognizing the 501(c)(6) status, I'm sure that is not something that should hinder the GP EDC from receiving funding from the City of Peoria. So I would really like to see some intentional strategy to bring more minorities into the process of determining the direction of GP EDC. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Jensen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome back, Chris. It's good to see you. And I appreciate your enthusiastic comments about the city. I, like you, am not from here originally and moved here 24 years ago, and I love this city. It's a great place to raise a family, and there's lots, lots of things to love about Peoria, and that's why I'm still here and why I sit on this council. So thank you for that. I have a few questions about the labor and employment slide, and I appreciate your comments on the statistics about the labor force and how that's a more important number, and glad to see that's increased by 921. Just curious, since we don't have comparable data from previous years, if that's been a continued growth? Is it comparable to how we've grown in the last few years? Is it less? Is it better?
So that's a great question. It's much better than it was in, so if I were to, and I don't know if I have City of Peoria data that goes back this far. I have regional MSA data that, that shows that we were in a trough, really, the absolute low point in, in terms of labor force in, I think it was 2015 or 2016. And we've, we've made it back up. But if you look historically, 10 years back, we're, we're much less than what, than what we were. And, and that's a combination of things. There, we have an aging, you know, so in Illinois, in the country, we've seen a reduction in what's called that labor force participation rate. It's a little higher in Illinois than it is in other states. So what we had in, for example, in 2015, we had a lot of Caterpillar people, people retire from Caterpillar. They stayed in our community, a lot of them did, but they're no longer working. So they, they're not in the workforce, they're not in the labor force anymore, but they're still here. So yeah, if we were to look back 10 years, you know, it would, it would look much different. I think the, in the region, we're up around 180,000 is the labor force, and I think at our high, we were probably around, well, at least 10 years ago. I don't know what it was in the 70s. I don't know if BLS has that information. We're up over 200,000. So there's, there's a lot of work yet to be done. So this isn't, not, we're not claiming victory here, we're claiming progress.
So we, I think you said a couple of years ago it was a lot less. Do you have a ballpark?
I could get you it for, for the, for the region, but I don't know if I, I could have, I could go back and try to pull the City of Peoria, I'd just have to look for it. I, it's not a dataset I put together, but it's something I could look at.
If you would, that would be great. I think that's important information for us to have. Additionally, I have a question, just wondering if the council is going to look into or has any plans to work to help develop a Green Corps in this new economic sector that we hopefully will have if we reach a resolution for the CSO, and sort of, you know, that's the direction the city's been moving. Just wondering if there's plans in the works to help develop that business.
I do know that the GP EDC has been involved with, with the Peoria Corps, that, and has helped, Brent Baker in my office has helped to identify students from Peoria Public Schools and other folks, and helped them some of the training. We'd be happy to be involved in, in however, however the council would like to see us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Montalongo next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, thank you for being here. As everybody's already said, it's, you always have so many positive things to say, and, and I certainly appreciate that. And really enjoyed hearing from my colleagues and their thoughts about, I guess, economic development here for our community. There's a couple of things that I'd like to see for Peoria, so I'm talking on behalf of Peoria anyway. What I'd like to see is for you and our, our team rifle-shoot to some top researchers at top universities who've been doing research for years on something and, and are ready to launch a business, a startup, where they're going to be developing some intellectual property, and of course, we have some kind of strings attached, so that they do it probably in the best place in, I think, the world, right here in Peoria. And I, and I'm sure I can, we can have that discussion here with the rest of my colleagues on, you know, what is it that Peoria can do to help, help with that in some form of a grant. But I think the real key for, if we're talking about, I guess, innovation, is looking at the top universities where this, the research is going on. I'm sure we can find those, those researchers who are looking to jump out and get started and attract them here to Peoria. One of the other things is what, you know, information too, could be very helpful to some of our, our businesses here, like I think you probably have a lot more resources for doing research. But for example, what are some of the new industries that are, that have large growth that could, you know, maybe some of the businesses here could serve them as well, or jump in with some of the products that they're serving today into these newer industries? I certainly would like to tell you about some of the ones that we've been working on here. My son, who's been working with us for the last year, who is our marketing manager, Alex, he wouldn't be very happy if I, I told you some of the industries we've been looking at and getting very favorable responses back. So I would encourage some research into some new industries that could, could best fit into our area. Also, I think one of the other items, and maybe this is a little bit outside, can liberty here to find out what we could do with Bradley, for example, and other PhD programs and, and helping them get started with, with that. I know they're very costly to, to get up and running. But as I've visited a lot of other universities that do have these PhD programs, there's a lot of research projects going on there. From that, students get experience or people in the community are, are working with the researchers, and, and there's business and economic development going on with that. So those are just a few things that I, I noticed and thought I'd give you that insight. As well, I'd like to meet with you one-on-one, just to discuss, I spent probably about six months in a program over at 1871 in Chicago and got a chance to work with a lot of different people and kind of see their ecosystem and how that was built out. And it's, it's actually kind of mind-blowing just to see how that all works together, and certainly would like to share some of those insights with you.
Sure, I'd be happy to meet with you. The one thing I'll say is that one of the things that is one of the goals for us when it comes to innovation and entrepreneurship in this coming year is to build a relationship with Bradley University and their students that are there. I think Professor Bill McDowell made a presentation here a couple of, a couple of meetings ago, and Professor McDowell and I have become good friends. And, and one of the things that we talked about was, how can the EDC get involved with students when they're in their junior and their senior year? It's his job to teach them how to build businesses. But it doesn't do me any good or us any good if they go and take that business and they build it in Chicago or San Jose or wherever they might be from. So we want to try to build those relationships with, with students at, at an early, you know, before they graduate to kind of sink some roots here in the, in the region. So I think even our own university here in Bradley can be a source of that.
Well, I'm seeing no more lights, Mr. Setti, so some things don't change. When Mr. Setti was working for the city and was going to give a presentation, we were usually expecting 10 minutes, and an hour later, it was over. So we still had that bit, but...
I'm gonna give my presentation.
But I, I'm very encouraged by the, the conversation from the council, between the council and what Mr. Setti's doing. I know that one of the things that we had a little bit of discussion on during the budget was the value that the city receives for working with GP EDC. And it was a good question, and it merited the discussion it received. But I, from sitting on the board and, and being involved with those meetings, there's a lot of really good work being done down there at GP EDC. And Mr. Setti is a great new leader for that organization. There's no way that we could leverage, I don't think, leverage the money that we're investing any better than we are to have the breadth that we get through that organization. And so I would invite all my peers up here to, as Councilman Montalongo said, take time and meet one-on-one and find out what's going on and how we can continue to help each other, because we're going to have to. Until we get to a point where the state is, you know, giving us a little bit more help in these things, we really are going to have to work as a, as a community much harder in this regard. But we appreciate your presentation. I'm not seeing any more light, so we would have a motion to receive and file by Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilman Grab. And with that, please cast your ballots.
That motion passes unanimously. And before we do go to the next item, I would like to acknowledge that Senator Weaver came into the chamber a few minutes ago. We'd like to thank the senator for being with us tonight. Madam Clerk.
19-017 is a request for a first reading review of an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of the City of Peoria regarding the operation of video gaming terminals.
Okay. I think we're going to start with a review from our Corporation Council on this. So Mr. Leist.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, this is a first reading. Some of us may remember about four and a half years ago, we... Some of us may remember about four and a half years ago, we first attacked the problem of the video gaming and the use of in restaurant and bars. And we were trying to further the purposes of the act at that time, which was to supplement existing restaurants and bars with income from gaming. It wasn't supporting gaming with incidental restaurants. So this ordinance has worked for about four and a half years now without any fine tuning, but it, staff has looked at the ordinance and is suggesting some changes and of course has talked to members of the council as well. But the salient changes of the first readings are as follows. The first one, instead of having an all-or-nothing proposition at, if you do not have 60% of food and beverage sale, you can no longer have video gaming. What we've done is structured a graduated scale such that we've actually lowered the requirement under 50% to have five terminals, down to 40% for four terminals and 30% for three terminals. And then lastly, two, you have to have 25% to maintain two. And that's, of course, the very minimum. So we have, in an effort to compromise with our bars and restaurants, lowered the beverage and food requirement, hoping though, still to incentivize the sale of food and beverages as the prime reason for their existence and not for gaming. The second thing that we have done is we have increased the fee on video gaming licensees from $500 to $1,000 per machine. Third thing that we have done is this first reading has an imposition of a $1,000 fee per terminal on the operators, our owners of the video gaming machines. The fourth thing is, and we have to work on the language, but there were some unfortunate, unintended consequences of this ordinance in that it really stopped businesses that had a successful business in one part of town and they wanted to have another restaurant or bar in town and then unfortunately subjected them to a two-year waiting period. So we have examined the ordinance in this first reading, although the language isn't arrived at yet, there is the thought that we don't want to disincentivize growth and uses of restaurants and bars in our town. So we are, if you have an existing business and you want to operate a similar business as a second location or even third location in town, then you will be allowed to, without a two-year waiting period, as long as you otherwise have followed the guidelines of the ordinance for your previous establishment. So I think that's generally all the changes. I know that we've, and I'm certainly open to any changes the council members want to mention here or want to talk to me about. This is, as I said, a first reading. So I'll leave it to the council now.
Thank you, Mr. Leist. A couple of things before we have other input on this, it's just a first reading, no action will be taken on this tonight. One of the things that the council's aware of that the general public may not be aware of, the way the video gaming licensing works right now, the video game licenses are given on a calendar year basis, so they go January 1st through December 31st. Our liquor licenses start on March 1st and go through February 28th. One of the objectives of, as we modify the video gaming ordinance, is to get those on the same schedule. So they both are on the same schedule as a liquor license, because you have to have a liquor license to have video gaming. So we want to try to be a little bit more efficient and get those two consolidated. So that's one of the goals in this. We have recognized if there is a change to the fee this year, that that could impose some hardship on some of the businesses to have to pay that additional fee that maybe wasn't budgeted. So I know Mr. Corporation Council, one of the ideas was on this first year that we, if we do raise the fee, that we might do it in two installments. So we may do one for the beginning and one for the second six months. So just for the councils, that's one thing that has been thrown out there. And the other one is, looking through the list of the different liquor licenses that are out there, one of the license classifications that jumped out at us that was different than most of the rest were the bowling alley. There's one or two bowling alleys that would not, they'd still have to pay the fee, but they wouldn't have the percentage because bowling is their major activity. And then we had already said that the fraternal and veterans establishments would not subscribe to the same food and alcohol percentage, correct?
They're already exempt under the prior ordinance and they would continue to be.
Okay, thank you. So first reading, the Corporation Council is open for questions or thoughts on any potential modifications to the ordinance before it comes back. I have Councilmember Moore first.
I'm just looking for clarification on the substitute language on page two, beginning March 1 and ending February 28, 2019. Is that correct? Is that, should be?
Typo. That's supposed to be...
And that was, thank you, Councilmember Moore. I noticed that this morning, it should be in section 1897, it should read, "Beginning March 1 and ending February 28, 2020."
Okay, thank you.
And the fee, the fee is not accurate either. It has 166, that should be 83 per month.
Well, also, Your Honor, that, this was drafted at a time when it was unclear as to when the period was. I have been informed by the Finance Director of that the $166 fee was not charged, it was merely the $83 fee. So...
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Euler next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of questions here related to the, how the fees were derived and what the impact is expected to be on that. First question, what drove the decision to come up with a $500 flat increase as opposed to alternative methods like potentially a percentage or something smaller?
The thought was essentially we, the staff had to start somewhere and certainly if the council doesn't feel that's appropriate, council can consider anything it likes. It just gets the ball rolling.
Has an analysis been done on how many machines we would anticipate potentially being pulled out based on this fee? Because I'm looking at this and some of these folks, that's everything that they make or more than what they make or large percentages of what they make based on the discussions. I mean, you've got people that are making a few hundred bucks a year.
Well, some of these items, some of these licensees would not be subject to, in fact, would not be subject to the food requirement, food and beverage requirement, because they were enacted prior to the video game ordinance being enacted. So those very low numbers in food and beverage most probably would not be impacted. There is not a lot, if you look at the gaming revenue and the percentages of it, there is not a lot of impact if you go down to 50%. If you remember, Councilman Euler, previously the ordinance indicated that if you did not have 60% of food and beverage sales, you could be subject to having your machine, all of them pulled. However, this one is a graduated system, so if you, as I said, if you do 40%, you get four. Looking at that, there is not a lot of machines that we would have to pull. Perhaps at most, one machine at a location. Everybody else tends to be in compliance.
I understand the fact that someone could make a decision that they want to pull the machine based on doubling the cost. And so looking at what some of them are making, I think there's potential that we're going to lose machines based on that. And that's what I'm getting at here. I understand we're trying to come up with something that allows people that are currently not conforming to get conforming or have a number that fits within that range. But I also think they're looking at what some of them make on the low end, that this isn't a prime product that they're trying to sell in their business, that some of them will decide that this isn't financially feasible anymore. And that's what I'm trying to ascertain, is if an analysis has been done on how many people are likely to decide to pull their machines based on this fee.
No, that analysis has not been done. And I think that's largely left to the businesses themselves to make their determination as to what's best for their business. But as I said, this is first reading, so no such analysis has been done.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Jensen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a few questions. Well, I guess my first question, and I brought this up when we talked about this a few weeks ago, if the main purpose of doing this is for us to, is because people aren't complying with the 60%, I'm questioning, because I've received concerns and complaints about that as well from some video game owners who do meet that requirement, that other entities that have video gaming aren't meeting that. So I guess my question is, why don't we just enforce what's already on the books, which says that they can be fined not less than $500 to $1,000 a day for every time they're not meeting the requirements of food and beverage? I mean, that to me seems like a better route.
Well, if that's the will of the council, certainly that can be done. I think the effort here was to be more business-friendly and as Councilman Euler indicated, is trying to bring those people that were not compliant, but just a tiny bit, into compliance. I think the effort here is to make sure that these businesses can survive, yet incentivize food and beverage sales. So it's not so much, the purpose of this is not to punish the non-compliance, but bring in those who were very close to complying.
The city's plan then to monitor the sales tax and the revenues to see if they're meeting the 50, the 40, the 30? And if they're not, then the city's going to go in and pull the license for the machine so then they meet the percentage requirements?
It would, it would depend on a case-by-case basis, but I mean, that's certainly something that could occur as a result of this ordinance. But we are, in any event, the city is going to monitor to make sure these proceeds are, as we indicated, 40% for four machines, 50% for five machines.
But I mean, currently, we're not doing that for anybody that's not meeting the requirement that's been in there for four years. We're not pulling licenses, we're not fining them. Part of it, I understand, is because it's difficult to administer, maybe we don't have the staff and stuff to do. So I don't see that that's going to change if we adopt this. I mean, how are we, if people aren't, whatever the percentage requirement is, what's going to be different?
Actually, when you look at, when you look at the reports, the compliance is, it's really very good. There's only a few places that are way off of where they should be. The hope is that we can incentivize, rather than go off and ticket our businesses, we can incentivize the sale of food and beverages. Now, certainly, if it's the council's intent that we take a more punitive approach, we can do that. But this is more of a collaborative effort to try to gain compliances of our businesses.
And I understand that and appreciate that, but so I just don't understand, you're saying we're going to incentivize them to comply, but I'm not quite sure how that works if we're not going to be following up and telling them that they have to give up one of their licenses? I mean, you're expecting them to voluntarily give up the license, is what it sounds like.
Oh, no. We will, if we do not have compliance with whatever changes are, if there are no changes to the video gaming ordinance, the city will take action because that defeats the whole purpose of the ordinance if you're not going to enforce it. So yes, there will be enforcement. The question is, is the intent of this ordinance more punitive in nature or is it really more collaborative? And the answer to that, these amendments are, it's more collaborative in nature.
Okay, that intent's fine. I'm just not convinced that we're still, that the city's going to all of a sudden start enforcing it and getting people to comply. That's one of my concerns. The other thing, you talked about the data showing that there aren't very many in compliance. We haven't, I've been asking to see the data and we just got it here at our council desks and it's a lot of numbers. And I can't tell from the report that we were just given, how many, and that's not what this is? Okay. So I did ask a few weeks ago the city manager to get Mr. Crogan to somehow give us a report so we can see how many video licensees are not in compliance and haven't been? Because, you know, we were told that this was a problem and now Corporation Leist is saying it's just a couple. So I think that would be helpful to know what the problem is before we address it, how to solve it. So I don't know if, you want to explain then what this is, if it's not...
I think the report that you have in front of you is the 2018 Illinois Gaming Board Video Gaming Report. So this came directly from the state gaming board. So this is off of their website, you can pull that information off. I think the information that you're looking for specifically, we can't disclose. And that's the amount of restaurant receipt revenue by the restaurants that we have that are doing the video gaming. But I will talk with the Finance Director and there may be a way that we can talk to you about it and brief you all in a confidential memo on it that talks about what the percentages look like.
Confidential unanimous.
As a follow-up, when Mr. Yurk and I talked about this several weeks ago, we talked about, is there a way, and I think this was actually Councilwoman Agasson's idea, to do a report where you just identify them by a number and we don't have to know who that is? I think that we need that information to know how to deal with this and whether it really is a problem.
I think we could do with that, working with the Finance Director, yeah.
You get that before we can, before this comes back for consideration?
Yes.
You can.
Okay. One other question, just to clarify for the listening audience and the people here, the state sets a limit on the number of licenses somebody can have, right? Isn't it five?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, I just want to make sure, because I don't know if that, if people understand that. Okay, thank you.
Maybe a little other helpful piece of clarification that the Corporation Council may not have focused in on was, we did receive complaints from businesses that other businesses were not in compliance. They were not selling food and alcohol anymore, they were just basically having video gaming without the other requirement, which is why the Finance Department took a closer look at this. So that's what started the discussion in terms of where we are today. But I think in full transparency and disclosure, which is when you look at these numbers from the Illinois Gaming Board, which for the public, you can go to the Illinois Gaming Board website and go to Peoria, and you can look at every business that has video gaming and you can see exactly to the penny what type of revenues they're receiving. So this is public information. And clearly, when you look at the amounts of money that are being taken in some of these businesses, we did think that there was justification for an adjustment in the fees at a time when, obviously, when we can use them. So I would say the characterization that this is driven by a lot of problem businesses is not accurate. That's kind of what started the discussion, but that's not why we landed there. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. I had Councilmember Rigenbach next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a really good starting point for us, but I would also remind ourselves that the reason we put that food requirement in there was because we were very specific... that the reason we put that food requirement in there was because we were very specific about that, that we didn't want to have video gaming cafes where you can get a bag of microwave popcorn or a bag of chips, that we wanted it to be a legitimate restaurant. We never intended the gaming to be the lifeblood of the organization. And I think we need to enforce that, because, I don't want to speak for all 11 of us, but I think that was, we were very adamant about that at that time. So as we bring this back for consideration, Corporation Council, I would like to see some enforcement mechanism put in place, and something that would be ongoing, so that we don't wait four years and say, oh, my gosh, what happened? So if you could just, what do other municipalities have similar things? What kind of enforcement do they have? But let's not lose sight that when this was adopted, this was to be an ancillary source for the restaurants. This was not to be, we had a couple of those sneak in before we caught up with it, but we did not want video gaming cafes to proliferate through the city. So let's make sure that that stays nipped in the bud, if you will, and then see how we can work on the enforcement of it, so that that's an ongoing thing and not something that we just do periodically. And I agree with the mayor that the fee increase is the least of my concerns in this discussion, to be honest. So, thank you.
I had Councilwoman Aikerson, next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to amplify what Councilmember Rigganbach and Councilmember Moore have said, and then I have a question based on what Corporation Lice just mentioned. If there's only a few, then it doesn't seem like it should be that stressful for us to enforce it in the first place. So, you know, I like the idea of receiving more revenue for something. I'm an advocate for getting something in return for the very, very serious consequences of the proliferation of this industry, which I just, as everybody knows, I cautioned the council at the time, everyone thought that I was wrong. Councilwoman Gray was kind enough to say that, I think you called me, forget, like, a fortune teller or something, or my, a future predictor. But anyway, now that we're here, I like the mayor's idea of more revenue, but I would too like to see the enforcement, and I'd like to have an explanation. And the report that I asked for, the city manager has, but we haven't been given it, and I heard that today from one of the staff members. So, because this is not the information that we need to see, what we need to see is the deficiency in the food and beverage revenue. And that's the issue, right?
Yes, and we can provide that, it's just we have to make sure, because those are very confidential and private documents, and that the finance director is by law only authorized to see, so we're going to have to just make it very anonymous, and we can certainly tender that information to the council.
But he created it in an anonymous way, and we just haven't been given it, given the information, so...
It's not ready, it's not ready to be presented to you. It's just not. It's not ready.
Well, I would, you know, it's so common for us to be asked to make decisions without all the information, and it just puts us in a very bad situation, and it makes us look arbitrary, and I just think it's, you know, don't bring us the first reading unless we have all the information to make the decisions.
Well, this, as you just indicated, it is a first reading, and so you're not being asked to make a decision tonight. This is just a starting point, wherein you can certainly, and we can certainly provide that information to you, and certainly you can give us any ideas before you are asked to make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Rock Regal, next.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions for Corporation Council. It seems like really the root of what we have here, well-intentioned council, that back in 2014 put an ordinance in the books, and I think they put some safety nets in there with the 50%, you know, or some monarchs there on food. But it's, it kind of seems like on, maybe inside this building, we weren't monitoring that on a basis like we should have, kind of like some maybe other collections that we've sort of kind of have gone away. What will go in place to be able to make sure that, I guess, going forward, if this would be adopted, that, what changes within this building here? Not just, you know, from the compliance on the outside, but what changes in here to make sure that we don't find ourselves in this situation 36 months, 48 months down the road again?
Well, there are protections, and there are enforcement visions contained in the ordinance themselves. At the time when this was done, about four and a half years ago, we were, and the council was sort of operating without a lot of the facts. We knew we had, the council knew it had a problem, and it solved it, and it solved it very well. And I think the 60% estimate that we used has worked very well, and such that now, four and a half years later, and there's only a couple that hover below 50, or around 49%, and most of them exceed 60. So I think that we're no longer in the testing phase, and there are enforcement mechanisms in this ordinance. For example, as Councilmember Jensen mentioned, there can be fines written for violating. And secondly, in the more egregious cases, we can pull the licenses, i.e. notify the state that they are not satisfying the city's ordinance, and the state will pull those licenses and essentially turn off those machines via the internet. So there are adequate mechanisms in place in this ordinance, should that be the will of the council, for staff to clamp down on these non-compliant, whatever percentage are status points you want.
So a question, I guess along those lines, is, our liquor licenses are based, in some cases, based on the food sales, correct? Or different classifications?
There's a variety of liquor licenses that are based on food sales. None of them approach what they are for video gaming, though.
So we should have the structure in place to be able, somewhere within the building, to be able to review food sales within a business fairly, because we're...
That would be monitored by the finance director, and I think the finance director could probably respond to those questions.
And I think, a couple have mentioned about being business-friendly. Was there any consideration to actually maybe just sort of, since we assume that those who applied for the license originally sort of knew the rules and thresholds that were there, and that maybe over time, some of those thresholds, you know, they have dwindled away from them or migrated away? As opposed to changing a whole ordinance, would it maybe be better to work with those businesses that aren't in compliance for a 12-month or 18-month period, to be able to get back into compliance, since when everybody applied for it, they kind of knew what the threshold was?
Well, certainly, that's a policy decision that the council can make, but I will say that this is an effort to work with the owners of video game licensees, in that, as I said, under the previous ordinance, the one currently in effect, if you didn't have 60% food and beverage, you could lose all your machines. Here, it's graduated, so I think that's an effort. But certainly, if the council wishes to engage in discussions, our direct staff to engage in discussions with business holders, that's, you know, that's something that's a policy decision for the council.
So then, can we go back, and I guess to another issue on this? I do question the $500 to $1,000 fee, the increase there, just because when fees go up, there needs to be some sort of basis as to where they come from. And businesses were notified back in November, while we were going through budget policy discussions here. And I don't remember this becoming a topic of conversation, or one of the ideas of a revenue generation, but it seemed like there was some communication that was going out to businesses already then, that there was a proposed fee that would be happening. Is this currently in the budget, or is this not in the budget?
It's not in the budget.
So it is not in the budget that we passed?
Correct. This was not considered as any item in the budget for a revenue source, because frankly, we didn't know how it was going to look. We knew we had a problem, and we wanted to see if we could gain some feedback, or get some feedback from the community, from the business community that had these licenses, but they were not, it was not part of the manager's last budget.
I guess I scratched my head a little bit here with, you know, and many of my colleagues around the horseshoe here, put forward revenue ideas, and I don't think any of them are particularly popular, they never are. But for some reason, this one was not discussed when everything else in the budget was. And to me, I just find it interesting and hope that maybe in future budget cycles, when we have things that sort of align like this, that we throw those all on the floor at the same time, so that we can have a full discussion about them.
I had Councilmember Seer, next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once a while, I don't mind letting some comments slide and not pick a fight, but with the Chamber of Commerce here tonight, I got to ask a few questions. Number one, a comment was made, no one knew we want to be business-friendly. I don't think you double a fee from $500 to $1,000. I don't think, we cannot make this comment, number one. Number two, everybody knows that obviously these people, these businesses have been very successful, more than people probably thought, and this is, to me, it's the low-hanging fruit. I mean, it's easy to take, but no, we need, like my colleague just said, we need to have a reason to double a fee, beside the fact that it's just easy to take that money, because it's low-hanging fruit. I got a list here of municipalities, 30 municipalities around Peoria, with all the fees they're paying for similar licenses. And they're all between $25 and $250. My first question for Mr. Lice would be, how much was the fee four and a half years ago, when this ordinance was written?
I believe, I'd have to check with the clerk at some point, but I believe the initial charge was $250, and I think we ramped it up.
Okay. Well, I've been told it was $25 four years ago.
It was $250.
Was it $250?
$250.
Okay, so it's still $250 four years later. Then it was raised last year to $500.
Raised $500.
Okay. So at $500, we're still double what everybody else is charging for this fee on these 30 municipalities. I mean, Joliet charges $250, which is the highest one, and Springfield charges $250. So the two, we have two municipalities at $250, we're now charging $500. So I got a little problem with that, and I know it's a first reading, but Ms. Aikerson talked about the process a little bit. I mean, this is an ordinance, right? We're trying to craft, and this is law. I mean, maybe we need a little bit more time to read this, because there's a lot of typos, and when we had the meeting this afternoon, typos, the numbers are not accurate, and I know we don't have to make a decision tonight, but I think it would help me, and maybe some of my colleagues, if we have a chance, at least read when we have a first reading, maybe a week or two or sometime, more than a couple of days, because I get calls from my constituent, my businesses, in the 5th district, that look at our agenda on Friday night, and it was not on the agenda, and all of a sudden, it was added on Saturday. This is a problem, because people call me and say, you guys are going to be talking about this? No, it's not on the agenda. And then on Saturday, we wake up, now it's on the agenda, it's a problem. Okay, we should have a little bit more time, whether it's a week or two, or I don't know, Mr. Mayor, when we want to vote on this, I don't know if it's two weeks from now or a month from now, but I think we need a better process, so that maybe we can have more discussion, you know, outside the, this hall here. But I know it's a first reading, but tonight, I'm just not happy about this. I think it needs a lot more work, and I know the vote, my vote's going to be no, and it doesn't mean anything, because it's a first reading, but I'm just not happy about the process and some of the comments people are making tonight, because the intent, okay, on the first page, we talked about, the intent was to help businesses with revenues. Okay, that was the intent of this ordinance. Now they're making much more revenues than we ever thought, now we want a piece of it. I mean, that's what it is, right? So I'll be a no tonight for this vote. I know it doesn't mean anything, but I mean, we need a lot more work on this ordinance. Thank you.
I had Councilmember Euler, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the topic of enforcement, we've discussed at length on many different issues. One of the problems that we have is that we haven't completely enforced things that we put on the books, from the ordinance itself to the collection of the funds. What is the plan that, in this case, we are going to do that? How are we going to monitor it? Who is going to monitor it? And how do we intend to enforce it?
Well, the finance department monitors, as a matter of law, they monitor these receipts and percentages of all these establishments. If there's an intent of the council to have more active enforcement, that can certainly be done. And that will be done by the finance director, speaking with me, our members of our legal staff, and then we'll have to, the legal staff will have to decide on a case-by-case basis, in consultation with the city manager, whether we should pull a license or a number of licenses, or merely fine them. So that's, and that's hard to say what we'll do in each particular case, because it's going to be fact-dependent and case-dependent, but generally, that's what our options would be. We can advise the state that they are no longer in compliance with the city's ordinance, the state can turn the machines off, and they can operate.
I've been sitting here chewing on this, and some of the things that were said during my earlier questions, and there's a lot of things in the concept that I support when it comes to right sizing how we manage number of machines, and changing the thresholds and things, but I really am concerned about the money portion of this topic, and the lack of some type of an assessment of what the impact is on this industry and our city. And we spend a lot of time, especially in budget cycle, but even throughout the year, talking about the impacts of decisions that are made, and what happens in our economy, and how that impacts our budget. And I'm really not comfortable moving the ball forward on this until I see something that tells me what we anticipate the impact to be. And I understand that you can't 100% delineate that this person and this person are going to take X action based on a decision that we make, but there are methods to come to a conclusion on, this is the percentage that we expect to see of people that decide to pull their machines, and this is how we expect the reaction of a decision that we make to come out. And we need to get much more prescriptive in this body about making decisions based on facts and data, and impact-driven decisions, on how we analyze an outcome to turn out at the end of the conversation. And so when we get to that point, I would be more comfortable with having a conversation about this, but I don't think we're ready to pass a first reading and start going down the path. Thank you.
So tonight, we'll not be passing anything, we'll be receiving and filing. So there's no pass or fail tonight. First reading is time for questions, potential tweaking, and then they'll come back with the next one. Councilman Rigganbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I hope the, well, we're probably preempted by the president right now, we didn't quite make our eight o'clock goal, but I think we got to remember, the purpose of a first reading is for us as a council to get these facts out there. This is for us to ask the very questions we're asking right now. We don't have to apologize for not having all the answers, we can't expect them to have all the answers, because they don't know what we're going to ask yet. So, of course, we, in my humble opinion, we have to receive and file this, so that we can get the facts, so that we can have the data, that we can have the discussion with our constituents, with the business owners, with the bar owners, maybe right after this meeting, in fact. But let's not stop the discussion now, that would be the most irresponsible thing we could do. What we need to do is get these questions answered, so that in two weeks or a month, whenever this comes back, we can say, we got the answers we needed, now we're ready to make the decision? Or we can say, you know what, we'll defer it for another two weeks, because we have more follow-up questions. This is the way the process is supposed to work, and keep asking the questions, folks, because this is, this is how it's done. And keep asking the questions, folks, because this is, this is how it's done. Thank you.
I have Councilman Grab next.
Well, Manager, if you're not having enough fun tonight yet, just wait until they recreationalize cannabis down in Springfield. Then we'll have a vigorous discussion about how we're going to capture revenue, or they will certainly. But no, I think all my colleagues are right in the sense that this is a first reading and Tim Rigenbach did a wonderful job describing where we came from on this. The idea wasn't that we would have the food requirement met by somebody putting a microwavable bag of popcorn, you know, in a microwave. We did have very prescriptive requirements. So this is healthy discussion and fact of the matter is, you know, we don't want to do anything that would hurt our businesses. But by the same token, we have to be sure that we are enforcing the rules that we already have with the intent that was there, as Councilman Rigenbach gave us a very good history lesson. But it is first reading, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I had Councilman Ruck Regal next.
Thank you, Mayor. And then I think it's a wonderful point about first readings. And I guess there's where my conundrum comes in because if we go to the portion of this which is directed from sort of the situation that occurred, which is maybe trying to find a sliding scale that can bring more into compliance, I could go ahead forward with this first reading because then we can make those adjustments. But the part that stands out here, though, is that there's a second portion that goes along with this first reading if it passes, which is that there's sort of an assumed increase in a fee that isn't necessarily attached to the rationale of why we're changing the first part. It's not to put extra code enforcement, it's not to be able to actually economically push restaurants. There's not anything that these restaurants or establishments are really getting for that extra fee. And so that's my conundrum. And so tonight, as it stands, I won't be able to support this first reading, but I definitely do appreciate why the first readings do happen, just for me, having both those things in the first reading. If, if the increase in fee would come out and we could talk about solving the problem of monitoring, then I would be fine on the first reading. Thank you.
That could probably start a whole different level of discussion. A first reading is a first reading. It's not, there's no law to it, there's, it's an opportunity to provide input. So I would note, and again, I would encourage people to go to the Illinois State Gaming Board website. We have, I don't know, roughly 65 or 70 licenses that have gambling. Out of those, roughly 65 to 70, 42 of those establishments take in over a million dollars a year in revenue. And I'd say the small percentage of those is only 1 million. We have, we have businesses in here that are doing 10 million, several at upward, you know, close to double digits of millions. I'm not, I am not, and I, I probably have the distinction, if you want to call it that, on this council of having a, you know, professional life in the bar and restaurant business for about 17 years. And I can tell you that, going back to the original comments, when the video gaming was made available around the state, you don't have to, you didn't have to use it. There's some communities that don't use it, they just didn't want to. There were people here, as Councilwoman Aikerson mentioned, that did not want this in our community. The majority of the council decided that this was an opportunity for us to give liquor license holders additional revenue. It wasn't to become a video arcade for video gaming, it was to, to help them keep a little bit more money in their coffers. I, I cannot in good conscience apologize for raising a fee on the businesses that are taking the revenue and that they are. And some of them are, some, I mean, there are, there are societal issues that come with these types of things that we have to keep in mind. So any, if you want to stand on the fact that we're raising a fee, we had, we had at the time, and I'm not, I hate to belabor this too much, but at the time, we had people that wanted to beat our heads in because we wanted to set the first rate at the very beginning of this at $250. And they were taking in some really good revenues. So when you look at the revenues that are coming in, I assume that some of the businesses that really aren't doing a lot of business in video gaming, they won't want to have five machines anymore, which is probably fine. They're, they will probably, at the end of the day, if they're not doing that much revenue, do the same amount of revenue with less machines. That's a business decision they have to make. But I think for the council to really understand this, I totally agree that there has to be enforcement action that's followed up on that hasn't been done. We've had a good opportunity now with, with four years to, to understand kind of how the ebb and flow of this business goes. And I think that, that we will be able to enforce that. But the main portion of what we're doing here is to try to bring the fee not necessarily in line with anybody. I don't, I would expect that after we do this, we'll see some other communities that, that come into line with where we are anticipating or already knowing what, what the Council in Peoria did. So a lot of work has gone into this, there's, there's still some information that I'd agree that has to come back on, but I think if the council, if the council wants to stress enforcement on this, we can do it. I'm going to take a left turn on y'all, but I want you to just keep in mind something when you talk about enforcement on this. During the budget, we had a pretty significant discussion about enforcement on traffic violations in this city and the huge amount of revenue that has totally left the city because we don't have traffic enforcement. What are we going to do about that? What's the council want to do about that? What's the, what are we supposed to, who are we supposed to tell to make sure that we have traffic enforcement in this city? So it's not just about video gaming enforcement. We have a lot of laws on the books that don't get enforced. Not too many of them have significant revenue associated with them like video gaming. So I just put that out there because I'm a lot more concerned about how we're going to get traffic enforcement, which is going to make our community safer and provide a revenue stream than I am about video gaming that's going to, that's going to raise a fee on, on businesses that are taking in multiples of millions. I have Councilman Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for, for your manager. Just want to make sure I understand, Mr. Urick, what the mayor just said. So some of these bars, businesses that are doing $10 million a year, we're receiving 5%. Is that correct? Which would be about $500,000. Is that correct?
We're going to, we will receive the, as far as revenue that comes in, if it's on food and beverage, we're going to get the restaurant tax, the 2% R tax, and then we're going to get the, the sales taxes that we have, which would be the 1.75% home rule sales tax plus the 1% state sales tax. So all told, you're looking at 4.75% would be coming back to us, to the city.
So using the mayor's example, $10 million, were we talking about food or were we talking just revenues? Excuse me, revenues from gambling?
I think, I think what we're talking about is gaming revenue, which is a different proportion that the city.
100%. That's my question. So is it $10 million that the mayor used for, for example? Is that $10 million of gaming?
I think he said $1 million.
10 million.
$1 million.
We have businesses that do 10 million, over $10 million in revenues on video gaming, one business.
So my question is, if it's accurate, and these numbers are accurate, we're getting $500,000 to?
No. No. Because, because the proceeds that we get back from video gaming is set by state laws. So the municipality's share in terms of what would be distributed based upon the taxable income and then our share, it's about $42,000 of that. So because there's the amount that's wagered, there's the amount that's, that's won by the individuals that are gambling in the facility, and then there's the taxable income that comes off of that machine.
If you follow that chart all the way over to the right, you'll see what the municipality shares.
So just to make sure that people are listening tonight and are here, what is this, my understand this split is 35%, 35%, and then 30%, which part, we're a part, our 30% is 25% of the state, I guess, and 5% to the city. Is that correct?
It's, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure because when we're talking about a lot of money, obviously we're very successful. My colleague, Mr. Euler, said about, you know, we should have some type of a report saying, okay, what would be ultimately, what we, what decision would these people do? Would they move? If we have too many fees, we'll go somewhere else? And then we're losing all the sales taxes and all the revenues? I think it's important to have some type of report like Mr. Euler talked about. Thank you very much.
Councilman Jensen is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just another follow-up question based on the discussions. Do we know? And if not, can you find out what, what do other municipalities charge for a fee?
I think Councilman Seer gave a list where other cities charge, and certainly, if you would like a report back on that, we can certainly give that to you. But I think, I think Councilman Seer just sent it to you.
Okay. Because I think that's important and that should be included in, if you could put it in a report back so the, the public has that information too, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm seeing no further lights here, so I'll just make a last call on if anybody else has input on the first reading. And if not, we have a motion to receive and file. Councilman Rigenbach, seconded by Councilwoman Moore. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes with seven ayes, three noes, voting noes. Councilmembers Seer, Euler, Ruck Regal. Madam Clerk.
We're at unfinished business. 18-231 is a request to defer until March the 12th, 2019, the following to approve the purchase of the cemental property located at the foot of Spring Street.
Councilmember Moore.
Move to approve the deferral.
Okay. Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Rigenbach. Discussion on the deferral. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion passes with nine ayes and one no. Councilmember Aikerson. Madam Clerk.
18-275 is a request for direction on amending Chapter 13 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to refuse containers. The motion on the floor is to adopt an ordinance, so.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, so Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move for a deferral till the first meeting in February.
We have a motion to defer this till the first meeting in February, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Discussion on this deferral. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes with nine zeros and two no votes. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we're, if there's no further unfinished business.
Okay. Unfinished, Councilmember Aikerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to bring this up because the council may not be aware and the citizens may not be aware, but I'm very excited. The Peoria Police Department will be having an onsite assessment by Calea, and this has been a long time in the coming, and there have been fits and starts with whether we should do Calea or not. And I'm really grateful that the police department has taken on this remarkable challenge. It's just the first step in a long process of being reviewed, improved, processes changed, and a self-assessment always reveals not only your strengths but your weaknesses. So I asked the city manager if maybe the police chief could bring everyone up to speed with when this will be. There is a city council member participation component. There's an opportunity for citizens to participate as well. And I think that this self-assessment and this onsite assessment is a very important thing, and it's coming up very quickly. So if the assistant, if the police chief would please give us a little bit of an overview and then let us know what's going to happen.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. So as Councilwoman Aikerson has said, the police department has been going through the accreditation process for the past couple of years now. Is this coming through? Okay. Okay. For the past couple of years, we've been going through this process and what it stands for, we're getting accredited by Calea, which stands for Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. So some of the questions come up is, okay, how do you get accredited and what does that mean? So there are five steps to become accredited. Step one is the enrollment phase, that's where you simply apply for the accreditation. Step two is a self-assessment. So like Councilwoman Aikerson said, we review all of our policies and procedures and then compare them to the Calea standard. And then if our policies and procedures do not match that standard, we change the policies and procedures. Step three is the assessment. There are two different assessments that take place at that point. First, there's a web-based file review and then a site-based assessment. During the web-based file portion, the Calea assessors review all of our policies and procedures online and make sure that we meet the standard. I'd like to know at this point that we have passed our web-based assessment, and out of the 158 standards that need to be met, we met at the time of the assessment, 151 of those standards, which I was very proud of the officers for the work that they've done going through the process. And then out of the seven that were not met, five of them were language issues for the general orders, we've already corrected those, and then two of them were a couple of procedural issues that have also been corrected. So when the assessors come to do the site assessment, they will also review those and then pass those standards if they meet. So next is the site-based assessment. During that, the Calea assessors come to the department, they do a walkthrough of the department, they conduct an inspection of the premises and, as well as conduct interviews of police personnel. Once the assessors complete the review of the agency, a comprehensive report is prepared for the full board of the commissioners. The commission will review all available information and make a determination on whether or not the police department will be accredited. So then we have step four, which is the award. Members of the police department will attend the annual conference and receive the award and then transition into the re-accreditation model. And then once we're accredited, that is for a four-year term. So then step five is the transition of the re-accreditation. And what that means is that the department maintains the files up to standard, they, we maintain compliance, and then we submit annual reports and coordinate with annual reviews just to make sure that we are staying up to standard. So some of the benefits that come with being accredited, we have increased community advocacy, a staunch support from government officials, reduced risk and liability exposure, stronger defense against civil lawsuits, and greater accountability within the agency. If council or the listening audience wants to look further into Calea, they can go to the Calea website, which is Calea, C-A-L-E-A dot O-R-G for further details. And then, as we mentioned, the Calea assessors will be at the police department for the site-based assessment, which is our step three on January 14th through the 16th. So next Monday, they'll be here and start the assessment. They'll examine all aspects of the Peoria Police Department, including policies and procedures, management, operations, and support services. So as part of that assessment process, the agency personnel and members of the community are invited to offer comments at a public information session that is going to be held on January 14th at 6:00 PM at the Peoria Public Library, Main Branch, located at 107 Northeast Monroe Street, so right downtown. If for some reason, an individual cannot speak at the public information session but would like to still provide comments, the assessment team, to the assessment team, he or she may do so by telephone. So the public may call, and I'll, I'll go slow here in case the listening audience, to give them time to write it down, 309- to give them time to write it down, 309-494-8314 on Tuesday, January 15th, between the hours of 1:00 PM and 3:00 PM. So during that time, the assessors are going to be monitoring the telephone, and if somebody does call in, they can talk to them. Telephone comments as well as appearance at the public information session are limited to 10 minutes and must address the agency's ability to comply with Calea standards. The police department has to comply with all the 158 standards before we get accredited. For more information regarding the Calea standards, we have a sergeant that is overseeing the Calea. His name is Sergeant David Smith, and he can be contacted at 309-494-8324.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Chief. Councilwoman Jensen, we're still on unfinished business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I have some questions about the status of the plan for picking up recycling. If you normally do that with an alley pickup, I know that you've been in discussions with PDC. That issue arose about a month ago. Some people have brought it forward and are concerned because they may not recycle anymore if they can't pick it up. And I know you were in some discussions and making some modifications to that and said it would come back to council, so...
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have been working with PDC as our contract states. Their bid was predicated on recycling pickup being curbside where it's currently in the alleys. But within the contract, we said that we had to approve of those changes. So what we have done so far is we've been working through with PDC on a process of going through the households and the areas in the older part of the city that could require, or that could remain with the curb or the alley pickup. But the lion's share of the people within that area, there's about 2,400 people that currently recycle in the alley area of the city. Probably closer to 2,100 of those people will end up having to move towards curbside recycling. And it just means that you're going to have to move your recycling bins, not your garbage and not your landscape waste, but just your recycling toters out to the street so that they can be picked up at that location. PDC has a letter that they've prepared where they're going to be notifying everyone of that change, and that should be mailed out or should have already been mailed out. I know they were working to get that letter out because the first wave of recycling pickup has started. So we have seen that those that are on Schedule A, recycling pickup started this week. Next week, Schedule B, for example, my neighborhood, the Uplands, will be on Schedule B, and that's when we'll start the pickup at that point in time.
So the follow-up, it will come back to council?
It does not have to come back, and there's no plans for it to come back for council's approval. It's a contractual matter. We've signed off on it. We're working through an administrative process to iron out this. If people have questions or concerns about the recycling, they can call PDC. I don't have the number here. I don't know if Stacy has the number, and she can let you know if they have concerns about that. And we can give out PDC's phone number to the public that we can share with. But at this point in time, we're not planning on bringing that back for council's approval or anything like that.
Even though, isn't there a clause in the contract that says if there's changes to the service, it needs to come back?
It says that the city...
Has to approve it.
Does not say the city council. It says the city. And so we're looking at that as an administrative approval process.
Because it does, it concerns me because if it's only going to be 300, I mean, I'm hearing from a lot of people who say they're not going to recycle, and they've been recycling. And one of the main goals of some of us on the council was to increase recycling, which is why we push for getting rid of the cost to the citizens. So I guess I'd like more information in a report back.
We've seen about 3,500 people sign up for recycling since we removed the $50 deposit. So there have been a considerable number of people that have signed up. We're now over, I think, close to 14,000 people that have signed up to recycle from, up from 11,000. So, I mean, that's positive momentum, I think, in terms of the number of people that have signed up.
You also track if people don't, or stop recycling due to the alley pickup?
We'll certainly monitor that as well and have that discussion, and we can certainly report back on that in terms of what we see.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business, unfinished? Madam Clerk.
We're at, excuse me, we're at new business.
Any new business to come for the council tonight, new business? Councilmember Rigenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Saidi was giving his presentation from the GPEDC, he made a comment about the real facts and how oftentimes we look at things through a jaded perspective and that we always need to make sure that we're getting the real facts. Well, I just want to point out some real facts that were lacking in an editorial in the Journal Star this weekend. The headline was "Efficiency Should Be a Top Priority" in 2019. They discussed a number of issues, and one of them was saying locally, Peoria property owners are reeling from the new fees the city imposed on them. These are fees to cover the decades of city inaction on the combined sewer overflow and to pay for decades of underfunding the city's public safety pension systems. Ladies and gentlemen, those two facts are not real. The city has not dragged its feet on the combined sewer overflow. This is something we've been negotiating with the EPA as long as I've been on the council and probably as long as Councilman Grab's been on the council. That is not something that we can arbitrarily decide and conclude. That's a process that has been ongoing. So to imply that the city has not done its due diligence on that is just so disingenuous and very discouraging for those of us that have been sitting here while those negotiations have been going on. And then to use the terminology that we've underfunded our public safety pension systems, that's another falsehood. The state of Illinois has statutorily set requirements, and the city has always met those statutorially required contributions. As I said earlier, the pension obligation is something that needs to be addressed, and you've heard us talk about that incessantly during the fall budget process. And I've heard many people say, well, what can we do? Because we're tired of hearing you complain about it. Well, come on Friday to the Gateway Building when we have our state legislators there and tell them that you support the city's request for some public safety pension reform, whether it's the 30-year rolling amortization, which I won't go into all the details, but that would be a huge game changer for us, or allowing us to make the investment decisions similar to IMRF, the Funded State Retirement Fund. Those are just two things that would be incredibly impactful for our city budget. The Illinois Municipal League also has some proposals, as the mayor said, that are top of shelf in that regard. There are 650 municipal public safety pension funds in the state of Illinois. If we were able to combine some of those, let alone all of those, think of the savings that that could create. This isn't something that's going to happen overnight, but it's something that needs to get on the table, and we need to have the support of our business community, of our employees. We need to get involved together to affect this change. And Senator Weaver, thank you for being here. So you'll get to hear this again on Friday. But folks, this is something that will make a difference, and this is something that we're not going to do alone. It's something Senator Weaver's not going to do alone. But together by applying the force that we saw come out against that parcel fee on something of this significance, I think we're going to be able to affect some change. So folks, we're needing you to get on board with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I had Councilman Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to congratulate, congratulate our chief of police on your new title. You're starting year 2019 with a Brian Newt title. You're now the chief of police, and I want to congratulate you again on this achievement, number one. Number two, I'm going to ask your report right away. The mayor talked earlier about traffic enforcement. I received a letter just a couple of days ago about traffic enforcement, especially on this gentleman here, this constituent, writing about Alta Road. I mean, I'd like to, and I live in that area, so I know it is correct. I mean, the speed limit, I mean, it's, I don't know how we change people's behavior. But right now, we're having a mild winter, and hopefully, knock on the wall, it'll stay that way. But I witness every day the speed, and I don't know how we change these behaviors, number one. Number two, when I talk to people around town, how many people are just running red lights now? It's incredible. So I'd like to ask you to, not tonight, obviously, but to the next few weeks, just to come up with a plan, how we can do a better job at traffic enforcement and see what we can do about these people. These people are just driving crazy right now while the roads are dry. So if I can request that from you in a few weeks, just to give us a report and what would be some of your ideas on enforcing traffic laws. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Chief, if I could tag on that, could you also tell us how many, how many of your folks work in the traffic division and what they do during a shift if they're not writing tickets to enforce traffic?
Yes, so currently, we have...
Just put that in the report back.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jensen, next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple items. First, I'm wondering, Mr. City Manager, if there's any negative impact to the city with regards to some of the federal grants that we receive with this shutdown? If you can let us, if you know any off the top of your head, or you're just...
We have started to receive some letters and guidance from both the state and some of the federal agencies about our grant funding. We'll put a report together and put it in Issues Update for the council this week.
You have some concerns. Are there some grants that are going to be held?
I think that, I think that, you know, the initial, I think, letter, and I'm looking at the chief, he just walked away, was the Criminal Justice Information Authority just said that, you know, from a justice grant perspective, they don't know, you know, was kind of the initial word that we got. And I think we just need to watch that. And we'll put together a list of what that guidance is and what we've heard so far, and we'll share that with you.
Okay. Thank you. Another question I have, I've been reading about how in cities across the country, the big box stores are starting to get their property taxes reduced in their assessments, basing it on recent sales of other vacant big box stores. So I'm wondering if we're starting to see that here and whether we are or not, if we have a plan to monitor that, and if the city's ready to file objections to that, because I've read stories how it's hurting municipalities by quite a lot.
What we can do is, I mean, part of this is, when we start talking about assessments and defending assessments, it becomes more of a township issue. But we can certainly talk with the township assessor. We can talk with the other taxing bodies. And we can, we're aware of those same articles that have come out about the dark store strategy that these big box stores are starting to implement. And we can look at, you know, giving you some information about how we're going to address that if it comes, if it happens here. It hasn't yet, so, but if it does.
I just want to make sure we're proactive, to be ready to work with the school district and the county and the park district to just file objections automatically.
Right. We already do. We work with them on major, when we see major reduction requests, we're working together with all the taxing bodies on that currently.
They're highlighted for you if that occurs?
Could you say that?
And if it's highlighted, you'll know if that occurs? You'll be, okay. I've got one more item under new business. I, as a, as a longtime public radio listener and supporter, I just want to make sure and say for the record that I think it's very important that we have local public radio in the city of Peoria. I know that there's been a lot of discussion, and Bradley is in discussions, I think, with WGILT to work in partnership with them to continue their local radio. So I just want to make sure that, and I would like the city council, if possible, to take official action, maybe adopt a resolution just saying how important public radio is to the city of Peoria. It's a huge attribute. It's something that people enjoy. It's why it helps make the city attractive, why people want to live here. And we want to ensure, no matter what format it ends up being in, that we still get local coverage of the city council meetings, the art partner, arts partners' weekly updates, the radio reader, and things like that. So, you know, I want to say for the public and the city and make sure Bradley understands how important that is to the city. And I hope we can work with them for a solution that guarantees that we'll continue local public radio in Peoria. So I'd ask that you, if I would like to see a resolution come back, it can be somewhat generic at our next council meeting that states that.
It would probably be preferable that we do this in the form of a motion, just to make sure that there, I'm sure this will probably be unanimous, but just when we're bringing a resolution back based on one council member, it's kind of hard. So just, I think we do it as an advisory motion to bring back that resolution. And that was seconded by Councilwoman Akison. If I could, as this language is being drafted, I would ask that it was a little bit stronger, just to say, and our preference would be that it was located here. Keep it here, because I think that's what we want to do. I think if we, if we water it down and say, as long as we have it, the council's good with it, I would like to be a little bit more forceful, if that's okay with you.
I know it would be best for the city to keep it here in the city of Peoria, but understanding if that, if that's not an option, then we want to make sure whatever agreement is put forth or however it's structured, that local coverage, local public radio in Peoria is guaranteed.
Okay. Everyone understand the motion? Please cast your ballots. Did you have a question? Councilmember Moore.
Well, it's in the vote. I can explain the vote if you'd like. I need to, I have connections with other radio stations, so I need to abstain.
Okay. So noted. Thank you. I'm sorry I missed that before I called the question. The motion passes with nine ayes and one abstention. Thank you. Anything else, Councilwoman Jensen?
Oh, no, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional new business, new business? Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we had a lot of discussion tonight about economic development, I wanted to, I guess, bring forward some, a committee, a group here in Peoria called IOT Meetup. I've been attending their meetings here for probably the last nine months or so recently. We had a meeting here at City Hall that we hosted, and I say me, the city manager, and Councilwoman Akison hosted the group here. I really think this particular group is really on to something that's the, part of the basics of our economic development for the future. And I want to share a couple of their, a few of their priorities that they, they see really important and pertinent to the growth of Peoria as technology is concerned. One, having a 5G wireless internet was at the top of the list. And I know there's been some discussion around here, Mayor, and I'm not even sure exactly where that discussion's at right now with that, but that is certainly something that's really important to our community. The other one they have is a policy, that the city adopt a policy for access to data. And the group particularly feels that it could attract researchers to the area for that information and data. And the third item, or one of the other items that they have is that this city adopt a technology plan around Industry 4.0, which in those terms are around Internet of Things, virtual reality, augmented reality, autonomous vehicles, robotics, cloud computing, data analytics. analytics. And why we certainly are dabbling in some of this now, I think there really needs to be a focus from our side to start moving this more quickly. There's certainly a bridge that we have to, to gap here when we start talking about these technologies, but certainly, I think our future depends on these technologies, and it's something that we need to make sure that we move forward. I've had some discussion with our city manager on, as far as a policy goes, for access to data, and it's something that this council should be seeing sometime here in the next month to two months, and it is very, very important, access to data, information for the purposes of research. I think there's tons to learn about our community, and things that we could probably do differently, more efficiently, ways to grow revenue for our city, and really, we need to put that information out there in a way that these researchers can gather this information. And Mayor, and council, but Mayor, I know you, you kind of create committees, you create the committees for our council, and we approve them. It's one, I think, that we should have a sit-down meeting here and discuss of forming a new committee that has this technology in mind as we start discussing more about economic development. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to quickly mention that I've been selected for a national task force on the housing crisis in our country. I'll be going to Washington DC representing the state of Illinois, and trying to come up with solutions that will be rendered in a white paper around about June. It'll come out from the National League of Cities. And I will already be contacting those organizations in Peoria who deal with housing crisis with their populations, organizations like Neighborhood House, and South Side Office of Concerns, and those usual suspects. But I'd like to invite anyone who may have a suggestion, perhaps from a city that you've seen do this before, or something that we can be doing differently in Peoria, to address some of the need for affordable housing, for housing for the homeless. I'd like to take all of those suggestions with me to DC, so when we come back, there may be something that, some gem that we find from the collective that is meeting there that we can implement in our city. And at this time, I wanted to, having now combed through our housing's policy session that we did last March, publicly compliment Director Ross Black and his team for the book that he put together. I don't know if the other council members have had a time to really comb through that policy session that occurred last year in March, but that book is awesome, and he brings forward already suggestions on how to change some zoning, some tweaks, some zoning rules that we have, to look at other avenues to increase affordable housing, and housing in general in our community. So I just wanted to put that out there, send it to my email address, dmorr@peoria.gov.org, and those organizations who are already dealing with that, you will receive an email tomorrow inviting you to, on a more official format, send that information that I could take with me. Thank you.
We'd like to congratulate Councilwoman Moore for her appointment to that esteemed group, and maybe the public would be interested in knowing how that happened, who put it together, and how the appointment was made.
Well, it's, the National League of Cities is a national organization that is comprised of member cities. I will pull up the email because, and put on my glasses, so I can tell you. Basically, it is being chaired by the mayor of Washington DC, and they've reached out through the nation to look at, one of the things that they've, the National League of Cities has kept hearing is about this extreme housing crisis that is in our country. Peoria is not unique in that regard, and so we're trying to figure out who's doing something to address it, and how we can, and how we can bring that to Peoria. The National League of City President is Karen Freeman-Wilson, she's the mayor of Gary, Indiana, and she, along with Mayor Muriel Bowser, the mayor of Washington DC, are heading up the task force. And so, if you've got any additional questions, I can send you out the press release to you, or provide any questions offline. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your efforts in that regard. Any other new business to come for the council tonight? New business? I have one real quick one. As we all know, Jonathan and Nikki Romaine were the recipients of a State Farm Neighborhood Assist Grant, where they received money to help them turn Greeley School into a community arts center. They're going to be having an inaugural evening of art fundraiser this Friday at 7:00 at the Gateway Building on the riverfront, and the public is invited, so the grant will be helpful for them, but it won't come close to what they need to get that building in the condition they'd like to have it in for the community arts center. So they would like to extend an invitation to the community to attend their event this Friday, the inaugural event. Okay? With that, I'm not seeing any more lights for new business. Madam Clerk?
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Okay, citizens to address. We have a five-minute speaking limit. We need your name for the record, please, and up first is William Jones.
New year, hopefully it starts off better than last year. I was going to come tonight and talk about the Alexa Scott campaign, but I finished that up, a little bit of it, in private with the chief outside, so I appreciate it, chief, for you meeting with me back there. We discussed a few things. I would like to get back on another subject that I was on when I was here last month, Springdale Cemetery. I wasn't going to bring this up tonight, but I had talked to a couple people. I also mentioned a few things to Councilman Orla over there. We discussed a few things about it, and I know they're hurting on funds. I know the city, I wasn't aware that the city owned most of it. I thought they owned some, but not quite for sure what percentages they do own. But I do know they need the help. The staff over there is really excellent. They've got the best staff that I've ever seen over there, and I'm 56 years old, or And these last few years, they've really made a big improvement, and they really need the help. I made a suggestion, I don't know if I'm going to get kicked in the rear end for saying it, but I had mentioned it to him. When I was out west, out in California, Nevada, visiting, I had went to a couple of your biggest cemeteries in the country. I went to Mission Catholic Cemetery in Fernando Valley. I don't know if some of you know where that's at. That's outside of Hollywood. That's where Bob Hope's buried, Richie Valens, Chuck Connors, the actor, the Ripelmen, a lot of people, just, I mean, in the hundreds. And the cemetery, I was there talking to some of the staff, they're actually going to charge to go into the gates to get in there, and it's not just there, but it's in several other places in Sacramento and outside there. I was just wanting to make a suggestion, maybe they ought to do that at Springdale with the historical things that's going on there, and maybe that's something that you may want to consider, a small P to drive through there, because I see people in there always doing marathons through there, they'll lock the roads off, and they'll use it for their recreation when they got trails that are here, the Rock Island Trail. I feel that they ought to be able to charge to go in the gate to do that, you know? If you're going to, that's revenue. Springdale, like I said, I've seen, I've got it on video, you can look it up on YouTube. I've seen some of the best cemeteries in the country, and they're all considering this. I was talking to them, and as you know, you can't get bigger than Bob Hope. I mean, he was a multi-billionaire, and they all contribute funds. Hollywood does, all your stars and actors do, to that cemetery, not just there, Park Hill, Parkview, Linwood, I believe it is, just outside of Los Angeles, and they got a lot of income out there. Be honest with you, I've seen it. I think Springdale's just as nice as them. The only difference in them and theirs is they got palm trees and mountains, but Springdale's got a lot of history to it, and it's really come a long way. You've got a, you've got a gem here, and you ain't working on it, they need to get on it. Like I said, I've seen it, and it's got a lot of historical things in there that people don't even know about. I guarantee, I could tell you things about Peoria that my aunts told me. I was going to have her come here tonight, but she had a death in the family. Her son had passed away a few days ago. I'll bring her at one of the meetings, and if you could meet her and sat down and talk to her, her name's Carol Gosmire, she's 85 years old. She's getting up near an age. I had mentioned this when I was here last time, it's Cole Younger's great-great-niece, and that's my grandmother's grandmother. Lot of history there, and they're all in Spring, not Cole Younger, but a lot of them are buried in Springdale Cemetery here in Peoria, and she could tell you a lot about Peoria downtown, and just the, you know, things about, that even the library didn't even know, Historical Society. But if you can do anything for them, keep that in mind, maybe that P going in the front gates, you know, maybe that's something you might want to think about. Thank you, have a good night.
We have Terry Burnside next.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to address council. I'm here to try, discuss a few things about what's going on in and around our city in respect to the violence. I've traveled many cities and states throughout this country, learning what they're doing in other cities and other communities, and several of them have come here to Peoria to put on presentations, from High Point, North Carolina, Mr. Jim Sumi, Indy 10 Point Coalition, Mr. Charles Perry from the West Side Health Authority. The point I would like to make is, a lot of these same cities and states are echoing the same sentiments, where it takes to. It takes the community and the police. Here in Peoria, you, a lot of emphasis has been put on the police to solve a lot of these crimes, they can't do it by themselves. So just to kind of mimic on what's going on, and it's been the focus deterrence piece in Peoria, and that's great, in respect to don't shoot. The proof is in the pudding with the numbers. We have 22 homicides in the city of Peoria, so obviously, that tells me that don't shoot is not working. PCAB, which I'm still a part of, that organization, we are still yet to get any traction with PCAB. The faces have changed, different roles have been announced, but we're still yet to get any real traction with PCAB. The community, tonight, I don't want to give nobody no passes. I'm not dumping on PCAB, I'm not dumping on the police department. Even with the community, we are denying our moral responsibility to help with some of these answers, to help solve some of these crimes, to help with the police department. But some of the problems that I'm seeing, there was a presentation given by Mr. Rogers from Chattanooga, Tennessee, at the Peoria Police Department Community Office, or Community Room at the Police Department. He said a valuable thing, and it kind of resonated with me, where he talks about relationships. Relationships are the new currency in this day and age. The problem with the city of Peoria, there are no relationships with the community and the police. I'm very instrumental in the community. We started some things called Community Outreach Workers. And I'm excited to see, and we have really not gotten any whole lot of support from the city in respect to that. We partnered up with the city of Peoria to do a proposal with an ICJ's grant through the street outreach piece. We were told that it got some funding, we were told it didn't get any funding, but we're yet to really get any major support from the city. In July, we shadowed the Peoria Park District and the Peoria Police Department after the fireworks at Leno Park. We canvassed the area where there's been known for a lot of violence, a lot of mischief going in the community. There were neighbors who came out of their houses and asked who we were, they seen how we were identified with our vests and stuff on, and we shared with them how, who we were and what we were doing. They said out of 11 years, there's not, this was the first time that they didn't see any violence. We got information from the Peoria Police Department of the hotspots in the city of Peoria, being the East Bluff and the South Side of Peoria, where the most shot-spot alerts go off at. Since then, we have canvassed those areas, and I am proud to say that on the south side of Peoria, this Wyoming, Oregon, has been the worst area for shot-spot alerts. I can recall since July, there hasn't been one shot-spot alert in that area. I canvassed that area myself with groups of guys. We are making a difference. We have proof, and I'm excited to see that Mr. War and Dr. Corey, how the city has signed on and agreed to support them, and that's great. I'm a firm believer, it takes a village to raise a child. I'm also a firm believer in it's easier to teach children than it is to repair broken men. So I say all that to say this, Mayor, I'm interested in seeing what some of your plans are, what some of your goals are with the community. We need to develop partnerships. We need to set some, check some eagles in at the door, set aside our differences, and let's meet at the table. We all have different strengths and different weaknesses, we all have something to bring to the table. I'm a team player. I haven't turned my back on the city of Peoria. I was removed for the chair position for PCAB. I'm still on there. Be quiet, because I believe in the mission, I believe in the vision. Making a difference, bringing about change, that's what I'm all about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you for your time. Addressing you as the president of the Chamber of Commerce and CEO Council, my wife Rosie and I also live in the city of Peoria with our three children, and with me tonight, Chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, Rich Kriegsman, who's the CEO of KMI Warehouses, and Cindy Loos, still here, Vice President, Hanson Professional Services, and some other members, along with some realtors, so maybe you guys could stand, maybe you'd welcome an opportunity to stand up after three hours in your seats, to show who's here to support the chamber and the board of realtors? All right, thank you. Felt good, right? I knew that, I knew it was jinx when you said 8:00, but a lot of important business. So, point is, that I'd like to make with you guys is, I haven't met the person that doesn't want Peoria to be great, and that includes all of you who I've gotten to know very well the last five years. Some of us in this room started this day 14 hours ago with Mr. Setty's board meeting and membership meeting. It's not a pity party, that's our jobs, but I don't know anybody that does that, time away from their, their family, if they don't love this community and want it to be better. I won't let you know if I leave at 3:00 Friday, but today is a 14-hour day, right? We all have some of those. So, what concerned me as we ended last year and the budget, the budget discussion, what really concerned me was some of the disdain and dismissiveness addressed to private groups of business and community leaders, specifically the realtors, the biz pack, and the Chamber of Commerce. And it is a passion of mine, and what I do for a living, because voluntary groups of business leaders and community leaders are what built this country, okay? So we don't want that to go away, and I invite you guys to, whether you agree with it or disagree with it, please accept their feedback, and I know for the most part you do, but the matter of the realtors and so forth, at the last, at the end of the meeting last year, really did concern me, because it's an important part of our country, it's a tradition, and it's how things have been solved and created in our economy and in our communities. Specifically to the Chamber of Commerce, and I did speak with Councilman Grab, and I appreciate the time and the opportunity, but when I heard Councilman Grab say, "We do nothing for small business and work for only the fat cats," I just wanted to clarify, I know most of you know that's not the case, because most of the city council members are members of the Chamber of Commerce, or own a business that is a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and you know that is a voluntary contribution you make, it is not a tax, it is not a bill, we are completely independent. And I just wanted to make sure the community knew, and you guys know, we have 1,000 members in the Chamber of Commerce, 80% of them have 25 or fewer employees, and about 10% of them are non-for-profits. So we include South Side Office of Concern, for example, I heard Denise say a few moments ago. And what we do for the community, or for the members, rather, free monthly seminars, a lot of the small businesses rely upon those, savings in their gas and electric through an aggregation program, insurance savings and so forth. So this, this stereotype of working for the fat cats, I don't really know exactly what that means, because of course, the large manufacturers, the hospitals, financial institutions are members of the Chamber of Commerce. members of the Chamber of Commerce. But taking the financial institutions, for example, who are their customers, the small businesses. So I take great exception to the fact, to the accusation, we do nothing. And I do want the public to know, I did try to address this with, with Councilman Grab. Was it, I asked that he addressed some of this publicly, refused to do so, but I wanted to make sure I made those points clear with this group. So on a moving forward basis, ask, what are the solutions, or what do we bring forward? Frustration comes, and where we get into this predictable cycle of arguing is, and I can predict it's gonna happen in 10 months, is when we're brought into the discussion, and this is the plan, or these are the cuts, it pivots so rapidly. And that's part of the process, right? But I want to make sure we are as up to date and up to speed as possible. Because the video gaming, for example, by the time I take that back to the members and bring it back to you guys, there seems to be, like when the Realtors and the Biz Pack were putting their information together, they were putting that together based on when they put it together. And the fact that things changed rapidly, that's nobody's fault, these are groups just trying to be helpful. But when we get to things like pension reform, I'm asking myself and my board, what else should we be doing? And I will be there Friday morning. And Councilman Rigenbach pointed, put that out there very, very eloquently, and you all know that there are some systematic changes we can make, and we can do that. And we are with you on making those changes, because I see how those have to occur. And we're not throwing away relationships and partnerships. Mayor Artis has put me in touch with the Illinois Municipal League leadership. Senator Weaver and I are working together with that group and with the State Chamber of Commerce. And it's not enough for us to ask Patrick to come and give updates once in a while, we need to be part of that. And you have my commitment that we will be. I know I'm a red light right now, give me, whatever, I'll keep talking until you tell me to stop. In November, we hosted the State Chamber Conference here in Peoria. About 100 chamber executives, three-day conference here at the Paramarcat, they all have the same issues going on. This is not a Jeff Griffin versus Chuck Grab issue. I know we need to be solution-focused, and we want to be there to help support that. But know that along the way, if we have to do advocacy, for example, with the parcel pension fee onto the nonprofits, I have members asking, or stating, they feel that is a tax, and how can they combat that? If we have to advocate at the same time as partnering, please understand that, because we're just doing our job and we're just here to help. Thank you for the extra time, Mayor.
Wayne Nolan.
I live at 500 Northeast Madison Avenue, so I'm a new resident of downtown Peoria. I come to speak to you tonight because I'm really concerned about the closing of WCBU-FM, Bradley's Public Radio Station. My wife and I have dedicated, are dedicated listeners to WCBU since its conception back in 1970, that's a long time. This public radio station has served the Bradley students, faculty, alumni, and the greater Peoria area community for nearly 50 years, reporting in depth of every important local issue. How will enlightened listeners tune into Peoria City Council discussions on Tuesday night evenings? Any answers to that? To many listeners of WCBU, the station has a synonymous connection with Bradley University. We enjoy listening to quality, reliable, in-depth news, reporting from an authentic source. We're definitely not part of the Bloomington Normal community. At least, that's my opinion. Can we expect WGLT, serving Bloomington Normal and ISU, to report Peoria area news any better than the Peoria TV stations, I shouldn't say this, currently report news, events in Twin Cities? I know they, they try to. What are the details of this proposed agreement between Bradley and ISU? We don't know. We're not excited about WGLT's combination jazz-news format. I'm not a jazz enthusiast, I love classical music. But some people do like jazz, and that's okay. WCBU's two-track system with all news on one station and a classical music in high-definition on WCB2 is much preferred, again, to me and my wife. We typically listen to news on our car radios and classical music at home. Are WCBU listeners expected to turn to stations in Macomb, Springfield, and Quad Cities? These are the listeners that live to the west of Peoria, the south, or the north, they won't be able to receive the station in Bloomington Normal. Will we still hear the Peoria Symphony Orchestra concerts and delayed broadcasts? And how about other area symphonies that are currently broadcast? And how about chorale concerts? Bradley has a wonderful music program, as you well know. Have Bradley administrators attempted to solicit major area corporations and businesses to determine which ones might underwrite some or all of the relocation annual operation costs? Some of these organizations must be culturally sensitive to important quality-of-life issues for those of us living in central Illinois. Perhaps WCBU Public Radio could partner with WTVP-TV, rent space from that station and share some of their staff. How will Bradley University be judged to prospective parents of future students when they compare the cultural assets of Peoria versus other comparable universities? Bradley's music department is renowned for its excellent classically-trained faculty and student body. They can listen to WCBU on their laptops while studying and relaxing in their dorms or fraternities. What happens to the radio programming for the 700-some blind subscribers in Peoria? Where will these folks turn for their quality news sources and radio reader programming? What will happen to the dedicated WCBU staff who have faithfully served in our community for so many years? Will they be employed at WGLT? These are just a few critical questions and concerns which need to be addressed before terminating a 50-year commitment by Bradley University to the greater Peoria area community. It's now time for sincere dialogue to begin between Bradley University and concerned stakeholders of WCBU Radio. So I would request that you, if, if you can, to go ahead and contact the, both the President of Bradley University, as well as any of the Board of Trustees that you know personally. There are several that live in the Peoria area. Thank you.
Reema. Reema Haviyakar. She's still here, or he? Okay. Elaine Hopkins.
Good evening. I want to second what they have said about WCBU, that's my subject too. To clarify, for those who don't know, Bradley University is negotiating with WGLT in Bloomington Normal, that's ISU, Illinois State University's NPR station, to form what they say is a partnership with WCBU, Bradley's NPR station. This is a scheme to save money, Bradley group people say. Under the agreement which has not been finalized, WGLT will operate the station, but the identity as Peoria Public Radio is supposed to stay the same, along with the frequencies on the radio dial, two administrators told me yesterday. What will be lost? Bradley officials can't say, because the deal isn't final. What issues are non-negotiable, they won't say. Well, I can think of some, including the coverage of the city council here. This NPR station is a cultural treasure for, for Peoria, and has very strong public support. As the Save Peoria Public Radio meeting revealed Saturday, more than 100 people showed up, and everybody was very concerned. The council should be watching this closely, and might consider trying to get a seat at the table. Because WCBU, of course, broadcasts the council meetings, and many people listen. People depend on this station for national and local news, to know what's going on. Many love its classical music station, which keeps them sane in this crazy world. It's, WCBU is said to have 30,000 listeners, that's a third of the city, according to independent surveys. So what can the city do? Pass a resolution of support for WCBU to remain Peoria Public Radio. Demand that the agreement, if it's worked out with WGLT, be made public, and that the trustees of both universities vote on whether to approve it. They're trying to duck that. They should, that should be insisted upon. Intervene with the FCC is possible, to make some of this happen and pierce the secrecy of what is going on here. We really don't know, and they won't say. We hear they've signed non-disclosure agreements, which is outrageous. WCBU is one Peoria institution that should not be allowed to leave town, so we need to fight to save it. Thank you.
Catherine Mosher.
Mayor Artis and community council members, good me, good evening. My name is Catherine Mosher, and I'm one of many volunteer readers at WCBU Radio Station. I would like to address another component in this discussion regarding the future of WCBU and our, and our, and our city. In case you don't know, we read the Journal-Star daily, cover to cover, on a separate frequency from the music and other programming you're used to hearing. Our listeners are the vision and some physically impaired folks in the Peoria area. This portion of our community is provided with special receivers to hear the information they need, and there are hundreds of them. They rely on us not only for world and national news, but more importantly, for the local news, including meetings, obituaries, and so forth. There's been talk of moving the station to Bloomington Normal, but by leaving the area, this resource would be denied to this segment of our community. And I do hope you'll support our efforts to keep this radio station in our community. And parenthetically, there's been a lot of talk tonight about growing and promoting Peoria. We wouldn't like to lose this jewel in our community. Thank you.
Jess Hill.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Peoria City Council, good evening. My name is Jessamyn Hill, a broadcasting and history enthusiast, born and raised in the River City. I live in the East Bluff with my husband and our eight-year-old cat. I come before you and all of Peoria to talk about the threatened shutdown of 89.9 WCBU-FM. If Bradley University does away with the radio station, we will lose an important asset to the listeners of central Illinois. WCBU is the only local, and I emphasize that, local media outlet that is by Peoria and for Peoria. It benefits the community with the radio information service for the blind, unique programming from National Public Radio, and the best of classical music, as well as live coverage of this very city council meeting. As a matter of fact, I grew up listening to the station, along with the talents of Lynn Cardwell, Gwen Milam, and Frank Thomas. And about 17, 18 years ago, in my late teens, I got a tour of the WCBU studio, and I felt like a kid in a candy shop. At the time, I wanted to pursue a career in mass communication, but that plan didn't materialize. So anyhow, if WCBU goes dark, or goes under new management slash local news agreement with WGLT, how are the visually impaired still going to get their news and information service? Are we still going to get news and weather focusing only on Peoria, Tazewell, and Woodford Counties? The numerous NPR, PRI programs? And what about coverage of these very city council meetings? Many of us can't always be at these meetings in person, or watch on Cable Channel 22, because some of us do not have cable and probably don't want cable television. So to Mr. Gary Roberts and the Board at Bradley University, if you or your friends and family are listening or tuning into me right now, please consider a plan to save WCBU. I don't think WGLT can cover both McLean and Peoria news. People love commercial-free programming, and Bradley's mass communication students will benefit if they got an internship in radio. Yes, millennials and Generation Y do tune into public radio. I happen to be one of those generations, and they should remember that many of our local talents on commercial TV, for example, Bob Larson, Tom McIntyre, they got their start on the radio dial, not necessarily at WCBU. So, thanks for listening to me, and let's keep hope alive.
Marilyn Cop.
For this forum. And actually, I don't think I want to follow that, do I? No, anyway, actually, you know, here it is, but I'm gonna scrap this, because I'm not gonna repeat, and I'm only gonna take a minute of the 4:48 left. Because I don't want to repeat anything that anybody else has said. Elaine, Elaine has explained what we're doing. And again, you know, I've been here, started a business in 1976, no television, no media like we have today, no internet, no nothing, but I did have a radio. And actually, I stayed in this area of the middle of Illinois, in this little town, and I felt released and invigorated when I found WCBU. I'll just say one thing, so, for the, I'm scrapping most of this. Anyway, I realized almost immediately that WCBU was a boon to the environs, and surely played a part in creating an informed citizenry. Supporting the station became an essential mission. I signed up as a volunteer, answering phones during fund drives, encouraging clients at my business and friends to give, served as a member of the board, became a sustaining, and I am a sustaining monthly member. I haven't stopped it yet, but we'll see about that. And finally, an underwriter for public radio for years. Really, I wanted to start this whole thing out by thanking Beth Jensen for making that announcement in the first place. And lovely, this was lovely, to get the mayor to second her sentiments immediately that this was important. And then we had the vote, and everybody agreed. So, I don't think I need to say anymore about convincing all of you people what we have here, what we need here, what all of us want here, and the fact that it should just stay here. Problem is with this, the only reason that we're down here, and some of the people that wanted to speak, you know, it's late, so they already left, is to actually bring more transparency. The problem with this is rumors have been swirling since August, you know, all the way through the fall and Christmas season, et cetera, about what was going on. And when rumors run rampant, when people have questions, what happens? They guess at the answers. So there's a lot of misinformation and that sort of thing going on. And the problem is, Elaine and I actually were invited to a meeting at Bradley on Sunday with, I'll tell you their names, with Zach Gorman, who's the Chief Information Officer at Bradley, and Renee Charles. And we had a very fruitful meeting. She asked all the questions, and I directed the conversation to, and to ease the conversation a little bit. You know, my name's Marilyn Cop, so I played the bad cop, she was, I mean, she was the bad cop, I was the good cop. So anyway, we, we really, you know, had a lot of, we agreed on a goal. The goal was to keep Peoria, to keep WCBU open, hopefully right here. But what I tried to explain to them is that there's a chasm that exists between the Board, Bradley Communication, and, and the supporters, all of us out here, the support with volunteer hours and a lot of money. And there's not enough information coming to a huge community of people out here that are pretty irate about this possibility of not having CBU here anymore, and Bradley. And I think that this chasm has to be closed, so what I would be asking- So what I would be asking the people in the room and the Board, I mean, and the Council here, is to just make this a more public discussion. It needs to be out so people know what's going on. And anyway, I really hope that CBU stays here because losing it really would be dreadful. Anyway, thank you so much.
Tom Hunt.
I'm Tom Hunt, 1531 West Metalview. Retired Executive Director of WCBU. When I was running the station, I always got upset when the City Council meetings ran so late, so here I am contributing to the lateness of a City Council meeting. Anyway, obviously, there are very passionate people feeling very strongly about WCBU. As a former Executive Director with 11 years of my career dedicated to the station, I am too. I think the Bradley administration and Board of Trustees do not see the value of the station. All they see is an expense. Now, I know that, that the City Council can't do a whole lot about that. You can certainly advise because, well, the City Council, you happen to be one of the important constituencies for Bradley University and for the radio station. And we're one of your constituents because the station, I'm sorry, I shouldn't use, say "we," they, I'm no longer part of the "we." But WCBU is broadcasting right now the City Council meeting, and we've been doing that for years and years and years. An important thing to note is that many years ago, there was a lot of media, a lot of news, many newsrooms and reporters in this town. There were four or more television newsrooms. Now there are only two. There were multiple radio newsrooms. Most radio stations had a news operation. Now there are only two, WCBU and WMBD. There was more than one newspaper at one time in Peoria's ancient past. Now there is only one, and that newsroom is getting smaller and smaller and smaller. Right, Steve? So it's why it's very, very important for an informed electorate, an informed populace in a democracy to have access to local news and information. One major source of local news and information is threatened, and that is the City Council's business. And that is the business of every citizen of Peoria. In 2005, I was here to receive a plaque and a resolution commending WCBU on 35 years of service to Peoria. In 2010, I was here to receive commendation for 40 years of service. I believe Mayor Artis, you were, you presented that particular plaque. Well, you are about to look at one of the most important resolutions in WCBU's history, and that is an advisory resolution on keeping the station here and keeping it local. And I want to thank Councilwoman Jensen for taking the initiative and bringing that resolution forward to the City Council. I really appreciate that. And I hope I'm here in 2020 to witness the presentation of a 50-year plaque to the Executive Director of WCBU. Contact the Board of Trustees. It's so very, very important for the future of media in this city. Please do that. Thank you.
We do not have an executive session, so we're adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilman Rigenbach. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank our listening audience at WCBU. Thanks to H. Wayne Wilson, Cable Channel 22. This meeting is adjourned.